And I'm going to call us to order. Councilmember Jones just called and she's running 15, 20 minutes late, but we have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Calling us to order, it's, as I said, it's 6:30, and there's a couple of things I wanted to go over quickly first. The first item is Item 2D, which is Discuss Essential Tourism Assets, Special Events, and Using Hot Funds as the Source of Funding Revenue. That item is being pulled and will be put on the July Budget Workshop. When this agenda was posted, we were supposed to have had a joint meeting with Visit Bastrop last Thursday, and we would have had that conversation to be able to give direction tonight. The Visit Bastrop Board was not able to make a quorum, so last Thursday's meeting was canceled, and it has been rescheduled for this Thursday. So Council, that's a reminder to you that two days from now, on Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30, there will be a joint meeting between the City Council and the Visit Bastrop Board. With the benefit of that discussion, then when we have our July workshop, we'll talk through that. So if someone's in the audience because they wanted to hear that discussion, I did want them to know that 2D was not taking place. The other thing I want to remind everybody is that this is a work session, workshop situation. That's why we're set up this way. We are not going to have citizens' comments, a time for citizens' comments. We aren't going to be making any decisions tonight. We won't be taking any action. We'll be giving direction to staff. That being said, Council, if you have a question and the staff that's sitting here can't answer, and maybe there's somebody in the audience, it doesn't mean that we can't speak with the citizens. It just means this is an opportunity for all of us to get information, and by the time we are, we'll have another workshop and discussions before we finalize the budget. And so I just don't want any citizens to think, "Well, gosh, we didn't get a chance to talk," or "I want to sign up to talk about this item." This is about us receiving information. So with that, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is 2A, and that is to review and discuss the Old Iron Bridge and lighting project. See, manager?
Sarah.
Oh, Sarah.
Good evening, everybody. And for everybody that's watching, please remember that during this type of setup, sound is not always the highest quality because we're in a unique situation. And if you're in your vehicle and your Bluetooth is on, you won't hear any of the sounds. So turn that off. We get those questions all the time. Today, we're here to talk about the Old Iron Bridge. And I really like this analogy from the Project for Public Spaces, talking about the roles that bridges play. And I think Bastrop is pretty unique because our bridge, I think, is an architectural marvel. It's one of our icons. It's definitely somewhere that tourists snap photos. It's been a physical connector. It makes movement possible. It's also a social connector, and it's something that originally facilitated commerce and interaction between people. Sometimes they're emotional connectors, and I think there's a lot of people in this community that have an emotional tie to our bridge. And there are symbols with which people identify. And so I really just liked this quote, and thought we'd start off talking about it in this context. I think everyone that's lived in Bastrop for any period of time, or anyone that is from Bastrop that may not be here anymore, and the majority of our visitors that come to Bastrop, either on one trip or on multiple trips, understand that it's an icon. We use it in promotional and marketing purposes. We have a fantastic tradition that the Bastrop County Historical Society helps facilitate, which is where you can become an International Society of Bridge Spitter member. We even have a lot of relationships that are earmarked on the bridge. The last picture in the corner was taken by the city manager at our music festival. And of course, I think most people remember the bridge was an instrumental piece, and I guess track to be in the Small Business Revolution, Season Three. A little bit of history, and there are probably some here that, correct me if any of this is not correct, but we got this from Kay at the museum. So the El Camino Real, which is the King's Highway, or Old San Antonio Road, is Historic Highway 21. Originally, in the 1800s, the Colorado River was crossed with small boats, and then we moved on to ferry boats, and then steamboats. And in 1889, the Bastrop Bridge Company actually contracted with the Chicago Bridge and Iron Company. They used wrought iron and cantilever and built the original Old Iron Bridge, which is what we reference, for the cost of $45,000. The flood of 1913 saw the river rise to 57 feet. Today's icon is not actually an old iron bridge, even though that's what we affectionately refer to it as. It was built by the Kansas City Bridge Company. It's a Parker-Through Trust-style bridge constructed in 1923, 60 feet above the Colorado River, at a cost of $167,000. It was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1990, prior to the construction of the modern bridge that Tech Dot was building that we drive over today. In 1992, traffic was redirected, and the city of Bastrop assumed ownership at that time of the old bridge. So let's talk a little bit, just briefly, about 27 years ago in 1991. Desert Storm had just started, Boyz II Men came out with an album, Father of the Bride was in the cinemas. Internet was made available to unrestricted commercial use 27 years ago. 911 emergency numbers were being tested in U.S. northwestern cities. The Hubble spacecraft event happened, and of course, Terminator debuted as well in theaters. So also, in 1990 and 1991, the city of Bastrop and the Bastrop Advertiser discussed creating pedestrian and bicycle passage along the bridge across the river. We discussed adding lighting to the Old Iron Bridge, and downtown business owners were concerned that changes in the traffic patterns could disrupt the business downtown. So let's talk a little bit about what the bridge signifies, and we talked about earlier it being an icon. When you Google Bastrop, Texas, these are the images that come up. And so I know that Visit Bastrop is in the process of working on a destination brand, and you know, I think there'll be many elements of that, but in most of our major marketing pieces that have been done throughout the years, and in postcards, and in photos, the bridge is there. And so it's an important piece of who we are. So those are just some of those images. I'm going to toss it over to Trey to talk about structural issues.
So, as the title says, we know concrete and steel shouldn't move this way. This is just an example of it becoming a narrow bridge. I'm sure, Mayor, you're familiar with this. It's in every engineering class that you go to. And that was just a slight wind. Of course, that's not a trust bridge, but my point is here, there's lots of elements that can affect the bridge, and how it's maintained is one of them, not to mention the weather and different things of that nature. And then if everybody remembers, just not too long ago, in March, there was actually a pedestrian bridge collapsed in Miami. So, in 2014 was the last inspection that was done on the bridge. We actually did a full in-depth inspection underwater, above, tested for lead, the whole nine yards. There was also, we went back and reviewed in the file, I found a gigantic file about the Old Iron Bridge there in the back, and there was bridge inspections on it '92, 2001, 2009, 2011. It basically said there could be pedestrian traffic, but they weren't as in-depth as 2014. And then here's some photos, just to explain, as I go through here, the photos are numbered, so they'll be referenced in that last sentence. Again, the panel points are numbered, zero to nine, and the stringers, one through six, north to south. So here's the kind of pictures that you don't get to see all the time. And as you can see, we've got pavement distress, I'm going to say probably from moving, the bridge moved, they're designed to move a little bit. We just don't want it to move too much. So, and you can look there at the right-hand corner on the north edge of the deck panel, at .7, there's a three-foot-long spald mark in the concrete. So that's some pretty significant stuff that just needs to be maintained in regular places. Again, underneath, the deck on Beam 3, 4 Beam 3, you can see the underside exposed all the reinforcement and the steel on the concrete, the spalding mark. And you can also, like I said, the picture's worth a thousand words, but you can see the stringers are in pretty bad shape as well. We've got some additional rust on stringers 1, span through 16 at the floor. It actually has a one-inch-wide, 10-foot-long stringer of just rust. So that's some pretty poor shit. Again, you can see at every uncovered area that needs to be repainted or touched up, it actually has quite a bit of rust. Here is on the outboard gussets, you can see there's a one-inch diameter corrosion hole. I remember this was in 2014. I'm sure it's not in any better shape than it was. And also, you have a three-and-a-half-inch horizontal by one-inch vertical corrosion hole on some of the gusset plates. Again, is anybody getting scared yet? Because I can tell, it makes me nervous every time I look at these pictures. You're looking northwest on the inner gusset plate, again, lots of rust, lots of holes, continued corrosion. Actually, this is a little bit funny, but the bolt that is missing on that right-hand corner picture was noted in that 2006, just so you know, inspection. Still hasn't anything, and they showed surface rust on the bolts on your left. You can see how much worse it is than it was then. Just to talk about the load rating, because I did ask for a load rating, because I knew we could have pedestrian traffic, but I wanted to make sure we didn't put too much pedestrian traffic on there. As you can see from the illustration on the right, kind of how a bridge works, as you start walking across, and it starts to move, or you drive across and it starts to move, the upper arms are what give you that expansion and that support that you need. So as those start to rust out, we're losing more support. So of course, the plans weren't available, so they had to do a load calculation based on what they found from that 2014, and they used some pretty standard engineering techniques. So they did a load rating. Again, this is an engineering standard used all the time for a live load for a large commercial truck, which is something that we would drive on the bridge when we do repairs. They also talked about, and I've emboldened that, if you look at the 85 pounds per square foot per person, so when you figure the calculations, bridge and how large it is, you take that and divide it by 85, and that's how many people we allow on the bridge at one time. I didn't do the calculation for you, but I think it's around 260, something like that. So what we came up with in the load rating, and it's real easy to follow, is if there's cars, you can't have people, and if you have people, you can't have cars. So you can have one or the other. Basically, when I spoke to the engineer, the only thing that he actually would allow is us to take a vehicle on there, every once in a while do some slight maintenance. The rest of the time, it needs to be free of pedestrian traffic. I'm sorry, free of, yeah, vehicular traffic. Again, this is an example of a gusset plate, over 50% of those are corroded on the lower So here's what we know today. We have bridge inspections performed in '92, 2001, 2009, 2011, and 2014. It has significant deterioration in all kinds of areas, which can be seen in the pictures. The pedestrian traffic is acceptable as of 2014. Vehicular traffic, such as a single vehicle, is acceptable for a crew, like we talked about, but two combined are not going to happen. There's a picture of Sarah from 1991.
This is me in 1991, to give it some perspective, and Trey's right there. So we were talking 27 years ago about this, and so I think the moral to all of this is we want to come to some type of, you know, direction tonight on how you want staff to move forward, so that your next city department heads don't sit up here with their pictures and look at everyone. This goes back to Trey, but I can do this. The current weight load for pedestrians is 85 pounds per square foot, reached a point of 50% deterioration. We have not allowed commercial filming on the bridge since 2017, and that was something that happened on a very regular basis, and that bridge has been seen in lots of different movies throughout the years, and there's an image from the Texas Chainsaw Massacre.
It will reach a point where there's no point in maintaining it, because there's nothing to maintain, and it will be like a road. At some point in time, the failure is so significant, the only option you have is to rebuild it. And when you're over 50% rust in certain places, you are fast approaching that place. They'll get to one more slide, and the money will prove its point.
And the curve, is exactly what you're talking about, it just drops off significantly at that 50% rate. That's a discussion that Jerry and I had. So the estimated cost in 2014 for the repairs was $960,000. That included just the structural repairs. It did not include the lighting or anything of that nature. And the estimated cost now, the engineer asked that we add 4% inflation for each year, and it puts us around 1.285 million.
And Councilmember, that's the point, is every year you don't do something, the cost continues to escalate to a point that it just doesn't become feasible to repair it. And we don't want to see that, because it is an iconic bridge. When you think of Bastrop, you think of that bridge. And we make sure we put that bridge in just about every advertising piece we have. So the question is, can we afford to wait another year? We really, before we transition to the lighting piece of this, it's going to be expensive to spend money on lights to get it the way we want to. So at this point in time, I'd really, unless we need to, I'd like to pause and get y'all to engage in this, talk to us about this. There is bond money available. We won't be spending a lot of time at this meeting, talking about how to pay for it, but I am interested, when you look at this against the other list of needs, is this something y'all are willing to have an additional chat about this year, and a priority order of some things that y'all may want to consider funding, and if not this year, next year? So we're looking for some feedback.
Councilmember Peterson, what do you think?
Like everyone says and knows, it is an iconic bridge. I think we kind of look at all our avenues and see if we can get a project of this magnitude financed, and if we can do it, by all means, let's do it.
So the question that I'll be asking all of you is, the question is, is this a project that we want to consider a priority as we move forward on the budget?
As far as it being a priority, we've got a lot of other things going on in the city, so I wouldn't make it a priority, but we definitely need to start looking at resources to where we can start making some progress in it.
So you would be okay with it being on the list?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I kind of, yeah? No? Well, I kind of think it is kind of a priority, because like you're saying, it is what Bastrop is. You know, we've been working on, or in our projects, and our plan is all this tourism that we're doing. If we lose one of the iconic things that we have, plus look how much it went up, if we would have took care of it in 2014, we would have saved, you know, $300,000. So it's, you know, if we can work on bonds or something else, but I do definitely think it should be on the list, and see, you know, see how far we can boot it up. I know we have some important things, but I think the further we put it off, we're just making the bill higher.
Going to reserve my opinion, because I mean, I want to know what it would cost to maybe reconstruct it, a portion possibly of what it is, versus keeping the whole thing, but make it more of an artistic interpretation of what's there. That's a lot of money to spend. And I, you know, I mean, I get that it's in a lot of our pictures. I don't, I would just like to see what maybe an option would be.
Councilmember Ennis?
I definitely think it's a priority. I'd like to see the total picture, because I, if we put it off, it's just going to get worse, and one of these days, we're going to put it off so long that we lose it. But I also know that we have a lot of other capital improvement projects that are important and necessary, and that we're staring down the barrel of, and as long as this project doesn't take away from the funding of those projects, I'm 100% in moving ahead as soon as we can.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yeah, this is another example of kicking the can down the road and increasing our costs. I like, Councilmember Ennis, would like to look at how the bridge fits into the context of the other capital improvements that we're going to be looking at. I think it is a priority in the greater context of what we're trying to do within the city. However, there are some priorities that should take precedent over this. But again, I would like to see it, much as Councilmember Jones wants to, in the context of what we're trying to accomplish in totality.
Thank you, Council. One of the things that I believe we're at this point, and I think staff is giving us the data for that, we really are the last council that's going to talk, we're either going to kick the can, or there's not going to be a can anymore. We're there. The pictures that we're looking at, the weather exposure, just the structural integrity of it, we're really at the point of, we have to decide, do you want to save the bridge, or do you not want to save the bridge? One of the reasons that the project is coming up in this context is I, like I'm sure several other council members get phone calls about, there's light bulbs out on the bridge. And, you know, if we're going to have the lighting, we ought to have the lighting working sufficiently across the bridge, and I appreciate that, because when you drive across the bridge, that's what you notice, but it's like, I want to, sometimes it's like, oh dude, you know, like, I'm scared to put the equipment in place to put the light bulb up. So what it appears to me, when I saw the slide with all of the different studies that have been done, it leads one to believe that in the past, there's a, gee, we're concerned about the bridge, we do a study, we pay for a study, and then the study comes back, it's always going to have a high price tag, nothing gets done about it, it lays dormant for a couple of years, and then the next council says, hey, we ought to do something about the bridge, and we go through the whole thing again. So I really feel like we need to be looking at this as we're either saving the bridge or not saving the bridge, because the costs are going up all the time, but there is a point that they go up exponentially, and there's just nothing left to save. It's when you're welding, you can't do a repair if there's nothing to weld to. You've got to have some of that material. So yes, we need a water treatment plant, and yes, we need a wastewater treatment plant, but I think we, I think we're all saying the same thing, that it's not one that, I haven't heard anybody say, "I'm not interested in the bridge, don't even talk to me about it," but it's got to be done in the context of everything else. But I do want us, when we discuss the priority, to not think that it's something that we can put off for two or three years and have the discussion again. It really is at a critical point. Trey, is that the impression that you got from the last study?
Yes, absolutely. And like I said, it's been another four years, and I don't know how long we want to keep continuing pedestrian traffic on there.
And as an aside, I can't help, and I know this is not the point of this workshop, but I cannot help but think that on June 30th, we need to make sure that, we need to know whether that number's 250 or 260, and we don't need 500 people standing on that bridge for fireworks, because I don't want to make the front page of the paper.
I agree 100%.
Period. So however, that's going to have to take place. The other thing is that with an improvement to the bridge, I appreciate the fact that we're talking about it for tourism. I run on that bridge. Whenever I run, I run across that bridge. I see a lot of local people using that bridge, and I see that as being a potential meeting space for our own individual folks. If the tourists like to come to, that's great, but I see a lot of locals pushing strollers and walking on that bridge, and using that as a way to get around town with the hiking trail that the Economic Development Corporation is putting in on the far side of the bridge. It really is the way that you could, to be able to get back and forth. So I too want it to be on the priority, but I guess, Council, I want you to really be putting some thought into, it may be the last time the bridge is on a topic. Councilmember Jones?
Is there any possibility of reconstructing it different than what it is? You know, sort of like reassembling it with, maybe making a smaller version of what it is, you know, maybe one section versus the three sections? I mean, if that's ridiculous, that's fine, just asking, but I mean, that, I can only see that as the only other possibility, so we're either in or out. It sounds like everybody wants to do it, so I think we just have to put it on the list.
But I think it's absolutely worth looking at, what are, because we're not saying we need the gold Cadillac, we're saying we need something that is, can be utilized. Like I was thinking of the Tables on Main, you know, I've heard everybody talk about tables and garden boxes and benches, and I mean, you're, we could come up with 100 ways to use the bridge right now, if we could actually use the bridge.
But I guess what I'm saying...
But it doesn't mean that we need a gold Cadillac to replace it.
Right. I mean, maybe we could make something almost representational of what is there. I mean, I'm just saying that could be an option, just throwing it out there.
She's making a good point. It was built and designed for heavy truck traffic. I don't think anybody foresees heavy truck traffic on there again.
I would agree. So in 1993, when the bridge was dedicated, and they started all adding the screening and the flowerpots and the lighting and stuff that's there now, the community then made an effort, it was actually cheaper to demo the bridge at that time. The city committed to come up with the extra money to see what you have today. So I think the community has an interest in it still, but there is approach that you could take and fix some of the structural issues first, and you could probably value engineer it over a longer period of time, and still allow pedestrian traffic only, or something of that nature.
Okay. Did you, staff, did you get what you needed out of this discussion? Council, anybody else have any other thoughts they want to share? Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you. We're going to go on and talk about, if we can find the money in the long list of priorities and get the structural repairs made, and kind of the part two. So placemaking is a very hot topic in the country, and it has been for a long time, the Project for Public Spaces quote that I began with, and I think that there is strong support in the community, and it's been talked about for years, to create a more usable space on that bridge, and give people an opportunity to be there and feel a sense of place. And so these are just some examples, and you'll see up in the top right-hand corner, Mayor, is a bridge dinner that is done. And so you've got lots of different options, and we're going to kind of briefly go through these, but wanted to start off with some photos for inspiration. The bridge can be a gathering space and a gateway to downtown. You could use it as a special event venue for Table on Main or other events. I can see some open-air art demonstrations and artists actually painting out there. Definitely, the walkability and the bikeability is critical. I think it's used so much now by locals, and if we would be able to connect it to the trail system and to program it and placemake it in a way that the space is flexible, I think that would be important. Family-friendly destination, we want it to be a Google Challenge success. Also, has the potential to continue to be an economic driver, is a backdrop for films. It provides the connection with the river. Public art, and we already are doing that on both sides of the bridge, but I think there's some opportunity to add some more art, actually along the path that crosses over the river. Green space, I think, is critically important. Lighting, which we've talked about for several years, and we'll talk about it a little bit more later, and of course, the multimodal transportation, and then really to enhance the sense of community pride and spirit. And one of the ways you can do that is through the lighting that's programmable by event. If the Bastrop Bears win a homecoming football game, you can change, you know, lights potentially to be black and gold, and, you know, to, not black and gold, red and white, sorry.
Maroon and white.
Maroon and white. Got confused, sorry. Anyways, so what does a gathering space need? Right now, the acorn lighting on the bridge needs to be upgraded, and there's been some vandalism issues. The controllable, we need a controllable walkway path, and we need to add some type of additional lighting along the path to ensure safety. The electrical needs some work. We've talked to Curtis Irwin at BP&L before for what is currently there, and if you We've talked to Curtis Irwin at BP&L before, for what is currently there, and if you want to use it as a programmable space for special events, we're going to have to add some additional electrical capacity. The seating are decorative plannings. We, at the Main Street Program, really like the idea, and Bastrop Art in Public Places really likes the idea of not just holiday lighting, but a year-round lighting piece that can be controllable to maroon and white, or Fourth of July patriotic colors, or whatever the celebration may be. And I think it'll be important, if we do decide to pursue this, to make sure that it's functional for a variety of purposes. And so, you're not over-programming the space where we prohibit flexibility. So, just a little brief history on the recent lighting history. We believe the current acorn lighting was installed between 96 and 98. At the request of the Main Street Program Design Committee in 2013, they actually came down and did an LED testing, and that's one of the photos from some of the committee members. At that time, the estimated cost was about $325,000. In 2007, thanks to Bastrop Art in Public Places Chair Matt Hart, he was able to, and Trey talked earlier, that they did not have the model of the bridge, and so, he volunteered his time and spent a lot of hours of putting that model together. We think it's going to cost about $7,500 now to get the architectural design done for the lighting. And the estimate Roth for lighting and the electrical upgrades is $850,000. We think that will go down significantly, because we'll be able to do a lot of the electrical work in-house, but it's still probably close to half a million dollars at a minimum. So, these are just some of the, imagine, the possibilities, lighting that we've seen. I was, had a national Main Street conference in Pittsburgh last year, and they just have some phenomenal lighting plans. And so, I think it really has the potential, if done right, to be another attractor and another reason that people want to come downtown and want to come and experience Bastrop. And so, there's a lot of options that are available. You can obviously light the panels of the bridge, but also, when we talked about pathway lighting, and I think there's some creativity that can be involved in that process.
So, next steps. Tracy, do you want to take this one, or you want me to do it? Before we go on, before we go on to that, I want to make one comment. I don't want to turn the Old Iron Bridge into Las Vegas. And those pictures, and I know that it'll go through the, you know, it'll go through committees and we'll have conversations about it, and it would be great for them to be lit, but part of what I think is really cool about the pictures is the simplicity of the trusses and the plain lighting. So, you know, it's great, in my opinion, it's great to do something for the patriotic festival while the fireworks are going off, but I don't want it to become a flashing billboard that's, I just don't want us to get too crazy and lose the essence of. Does anybody else share that thought or concern?
Yeah, you bet. You have to write in there, because this is Corpus Christi, and they did a lot of work on that big bridge that goes over by the Lexington over there, and they've got variation of many different colors and so forth. And it's just, to me, it's just not a picture.
And I know that's in the details, because that's tend to where I get, but I just, I don't want us to spend a lot of money to make it do a million things, and we're like, you know, we'd really just sort of like the on-off, maroon, red, white, and blue. Well, the Bastrop Bears, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ennis, but, yes, I, but you guys get the gist of what I'm saying. Let's not over-design something out of the character of the community.
Absolutely.
Okay, so now, find us some money, Ms. Walden.
So, I have looked at our current debt service rate and how much debt capacity we have as we go forward, and we had our financial advisor run some numbers for us. So, we do have 4.2 million available new debt capacity within the current rates, and so, that is one option for this particular project.
Mayor and Council, the point tonight is really not to debate the 4.2 million, because that's going to be on an upcoming budget. It's more to give you a scope of magnitude, to help you appreciate where this might fit in. This is not going to be the only year in the next few years that we have excess debt capacity. So, part of the exercise in July will be bringing you a multi-year spreadsheet of what that is, a multi-list, a list of all of the multiple projects, and then structuring in it a way that we can manage the debt that we sell and deliver. We're going to talk about a project tonight, we sold that far and we've yet to spend. And so, our needs are huge, and what we don't want to do is tie up debt for a project that we can't get to for many years, when there are other things we may be using that far. So, the point tonight is strictly, there's 4.2 million this year, there'll be some additional money next year. Is this a conversation you want to add to the list to debate in July, when we begin putting that list together?
So, Council, we need to give them some feedback on that, and I would ask you to reread the first sentence, this debt's available without raising taxes. So, I believe this is also bonds that do not require, the citizens don't have to vote on it, it's not raising taxes, it's within our capacity of doing business. I look at it as, we have a credit card with a credit limit on it, and we're talking about using some of that credit limit for something. So, again, we're not, we don't have a list of the other things that we could possibly spend the 4.2 on. The question tonight is, should staff take the steps necessary for that to be one of the things considered on the list? I'll go the opposite way. Mayor Proton Nelson?
Well, I keep coming back to formal function. If we don't fix the structural defects there and make the bridge more functional, in whatever form it takes, whatever light we put on it, kind of a moot point. And I would really like to prioritize this process to alleviate some of the structural defects that are on the bridge, and then perhaps address the lighting and the aesthetics at a later point in time.
Councilmember Ennis?
I agree with Councilman Nelson.
Councilmember Peterson?
I agree with Mayor Proton Nelson.
Councilmember Rogers? I agree. Councilmember Jones, you okay with that?
I agree, but I additionally think that we should make it a whole package. I mean, address the structural integrity, look at the aesthetics and the lighting, because I think that's fundamentally, that decision was made in the 90s, and it's something I get a lot of phone calls about, so I just think it should be a whole package that we look at, and it's obviously important. You seem to think we have the money, and if we're going to do it, let's just do it. And I just kind of want to throw something in here, the rodeo over here.
Okay. Not on the agenda, yeah, not what we're talking about, okay. But, so, and I agree with the order of those things, and I think everybody's on the same page. If we're going to do it, we want to do it, but I don't want to sell bonds for lighting if the structural repairs are going to take a year. You know, so there may be, we should time the debt for when we can spend the debt, in my opinion. But I would like to see us lock that down to where there's a plan, and we don't get halfway through the structural repairs, and then we blow off the rest of the project. But, and I know Ms. Walden will help us make sure that we're not using, wasting bonding capacity if we have no intention of selling it, because I personally think the structural repairs, that's not going to be a two-week kind of deal. It's going to take a while for that to be properly done.
Yes, ma'am, and it becomes a foundational piece, that if we don't do, fundamentally changes a number of other things, like the river trail, the connectivity to the other side of the river that becomes potential infill that ties back to downtown long-term. So, I appreciate the mayor sentiments that this is, we're really kind of, as I would say, a fisher cut bait decision about what this bridge means. So, we appreciate this. The last comments that just reaffirm what the mayor's saying, that this is not going to be a quick project. If you were to say that, yes, we want to fund it, we would have to create an RFQ for structural repairs. There's not just anybody out there that works on bridges, so we'd have to work through that, let the contract, that will be a multi-month, could be a year, year and a half process. I think what I hear being discussed is, before we go back and do an RFQ for bridge lighting design, we need to have a fundamental conversation about bridge lighting, period. And then we can, from that, work toward determining what kind of lighting design we would want. And once we get those two things worked out, you saw the picture that Sarah brought up about placemaking. There are some real opportunities to design the bridges public space, because if you really think about it, it's the only place that we can experience the river without being in the river. Because you either walk alongside the river, but being able to really get a different and unique perspective of the river, you have to be on the bridge. And the 150 bridge is not comfortable, because you're right up there with the traffic, so it's a very unique space. So, this is a multi-year, three, four-year process to get all of this done. So, that's the reason that we need some perspective, so that we can bring you back a linear five, six-year plan with how we finance this, because this is not going to be the only year we have excess debt capacity. So, I think that would address some of your concerns, Councilmember Peterson, in that is, we take care of what we need when we can, and then, as we have more money, we just have a list, and we begin to check the things off the list. But it's helpful for staff if we have that list, so we can begin to work on scope of magnitude of numbers and make sure we're right when we get there.
We seem to have skipped that middle paragraph, and since I'm the liaison for the Bastrop Art in Public Places, I just want to confirm that they have been wanting to fund the lighting, and that was a part of their funds. They are funded by hot funds, so in my opinion, I'm fine with the lighting being funded with hot. I don't know if there's additional conversations that we need to have.
I think the minute you take Las Vegas out of this, I'm not sure that this becomes an option. If it is an LED, picturesque, kind of something that becomes a tourist attraction, I think hot funding is the way. But if it's just white lights, they either burn or they don't, depending on how simplistic the community chooses to go, this may or may not be the highest and best use, but it also will dramatically impact the price tag as well.
So, we can, I guess, part of what you're asking is, are, would we be open to using hot funds? And I think, I think the answer is if it's allowed by law, yes, that's a great way to find it. On the RFQ for the structural repairs, I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Jones said, we're not trying to do structural repairs back to the heavy truck traffic of the original bridge design. You know, we want to repair it to where it's safe, but safe with, for a pedestrian use.
And that's where I think there's an opportunity to value engineer it, so.
Okay, so we're moving on to item 2B, and that is review and discuss survey results of the Citizen CIP survey that was due back on April 20th.
Mayor and Council, if you will recall, the city posted a CIP survey, and we did a month-long survey on our website, and we had some very basic, open-ended questions, and those questions were, what would you like to see, why would you like to see it, where would you like to see it? So, what staff has done is compiled these for your review. We got 104 participants. Some participants gave a single answer, some gave multiple answers as a part of their response, but we got 104 participants. We talked about this publicly and agreed that it needed to be for residents only, because chances were very great that most of these projects would be funded with public debt that's paid for with property tax. So, 66% of the respondents were residents, and 34% were non-residents. And as I go through this, I have highlighted in orange the non-resident response. I checked every address, some were in our ETJ, some were not in our ETJ, some were in Austin, and some were out of state. So, we draw a lot of interest from around the country for people that have an affinity for the city of Bastrop. So, I have attempted to just replicate the information, so that you get a sense of the kind of comments that were made, and then for searchability purposes, we created categories, so that we can categorize like things in a category to kind of have a scope of magnitude, if you will. So, one of the comments was, we needed to turn 921 into green space and create downtown restrooms. Downtown restrooms showed up about four times in various ways. We had a couple of comments for access roads, both north and south of 71. This is a priority for you and your focus areas for multimodal, and then it also was a part of your list of priorities for this year, to create accessibility. The next comment was ADA sidewalk improvements, and in our budget this year, we have about $150,000 worth of improvements for downtown sidewalk connectivity, and as those sidewalks are connected and made, we will convert them at the street level to ADA compliance. We're going to be talking in our next project on Main Street renovations about making ADA sidewalk improvements, so duly noted, and we're certainly working toward that. There were multiple comments about additional bridge across the Colorado River. Two of those were residents, three were not. There is a development north of town that should that be resurrected. It has a bridge component, and we've been visiting with some developers where that certainly might be an option in the future. We got several comments, a couple standalone, and several with some other things about the need for additional downtown parking. We got a comment for additional multimedia staff, and then we had two different components for the animal shelter that is currently owned and managed by the county, and we pay to participate in that shelter with the county. We saw several versions of bicycle lanes or bicycle trails, certainly something that y'all identified in your focus areas for multimodal. We had two different submittals to close Main Street and/or Alley B, so that you had a pedestrian-only field, given the traffic that runs up and down Main Street. Also, you might see downtown restrooms was on that one as well, as well as free Wi-Fi. Free Wi-Fi is in the city's work plan, and I think it has a 2020 fiscal year designation to research that and move forward with that. The next fall into the category of community recreation center/sports complex, and that became a catch-all, because some wanted both, some wanted one, some wanted the other, but there is a real interest on the part of some of our community to have more activities for recreational opportunities, whether children, teens, or adults. The, there was an entry for Cultural Heritage Trail, as well as disc golf, from folks that didn't live in the community, and yet another for downtown restrooms. There were a number of entries for drainage improvements. Very few were specific, all of them really summarized the need for drainage, and that is something that we have spent some time with this year, and have committed to spend quite a bit of time next year addressing. Y'all have agreed to kind of take a tour of the community in July, and there will be a drainage tour component to that tour, where we can focus some of your attention on some potential opportunities that we need to study and get you to agree to that. get you to agree to that. So all of that to say, um, that's certainly in your purview of, of being addressed. Um, the next items are, um, and that's so small, I cannot read that. The, it is going to be at the top, um... The, um, next one, uh, that are so small are, um, indoor pool. And we saw indoor pool, we saw outdoor pool, we saw pool in general. Uh, the number one response we got back, uh, from, uh, everybody that participated was there were 19 people that expressed interest for a pool. Um, 12 residents were interested in an indoor pool, four non-residents were interested in an indoor pool, and then there were three non-residents interested in an outdoor pool. Um, so that's 19. That was really the number one, uh, comment was a pool. Um, there were a number of seniors, uh, that feel this is a great way for them to exercise in a way, uh, that is not, um, uh, challenging to their stage of life. Uh, we also had, uh, someone that had an interest in wellness programs and we're working with the YMCA this year to put together a list of programs for next year and included in that is a wellness component. Um, we had someone that was interested in a larger library, improved Wi-Fi at the library, better computers, and more storage. Uh, improved Wi-Fi and better computers is being addressed in the fiscal year 2019, submittal that we will send to council. Uh, the next, um, couple are the Main Street renovation project that you're discussing this evening. Um, and then the, uh, uh, next couple are outdoor pool that were included in that 19 number that I gave that were interested in a pool. Uh, we had, uh, someone that was interested in adding, uh, public transportation to various community, uh, points of interest in the county. And that will be an item that we will share with CARTs, uh, since they offer public transportation, we'll just share that request with them. We had, um, four people interested in a quiet zone. Uh, that is something that, um, can be addressed through closing a railroad crossing as well as making some improvements at railroad crossings. We have a conversation coming up with the school district and we know this is of interest. Um, in reading the federal legislation for a quiet zone, uh, there is an opportunity, I think, to do a partial, uh, zone. So it might be that we could work with the railroad that we can't afford to do it 24 hours a day. We might could, uh, fix it where from 10 to 7, uh, we could fix it so that the gentleman that goes through at 3:30 in the morning and hits the edge of town and holds the whistle as he goes through Bastrop, maybe we can, uh, silence him so we don't hear him quite as gloriously as we do.
That sounds like personal experience.
Yes, yes ma'am. When I first moved here, I could tell the driver by who was driving the train. Um, the, um, next item that we got, a number of are sidewalk improvements downtown. And, uh, we are in the process of getting an RF, uh, P or a bid, rather, for contract, uh, concrete work and a contractor that will take the $150,000 that we already have, uh, allocated and begin to make these sidewalk improvements downtown. So, uh, there's a lot of support to continue that work.
I do want to clarify that that's money for the residential areas downtown, not necessarily the commercial business district.
That is correct. The commercial business district's a part of the Main Street renovation project we'll be talking about. Um, we also got, um, a couple of, uh, comments about a skate park. And that skate park is being, uh, designed by Burditt with the help of the Park Board. Uh, the design has been paid for, uh, the actual construction of the skate park is not. So once we get a design and a price tag, we'll be bringing that to council for consideration in future years. Uh, there was a non-residence that made the request for a special needs gym. Uh, there were, um, several speeding concerns that Chief Alkelt has already, uh, addressed. They have been provided to the Patrol Division and are being tracked. And, uh, the Public Works Department has been putting out traffic counters around town to evaluate street condition. So if there are, um, traffic data in the areas that have been designated, they are coordinating and sharing that as well. There were several that expressed an interest in the skate, uh, State Park Trail that is currently being designed by MWN Design. So, um, once we get it designed, then we can begin to talk about, uh, funding that in future years. There are, um, several, uh...
Wait, wait, can we go back on the State Park Trail?
Yes.
I thought that was funded. I thought we had a grant to fund that trail.
The, the grant has been funded, but it has to be matched and that's not been paid for, I don't believe. Has it?
Okay. Do we know what that number is? Okay. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I just, I know there's been a lot of...
I think it's an 80/20, is it not? So it'll be 20% of whatever the cost of the trail is once designed.
I think that the community has the impression that, that the 20% was so small that I think most folks have considered that funded. And council, are you, uh, Councilmember Jones is nodding yes, so...
May that be so when it's priced.
Yes, okay, okay. I just, I don't, um, I think there's a perception that it's funded and if it's not, we need to be clear about that and know as soon as we can what that number is. Because I believe, we think it's under design and funded and going to happen.
Yes, ma'am. So to acknowledge the statement, as soon as we get a, an opinion of engineering probable costs, we will bring that back to you and attempt to identify where that 20% would come from. Um, there are, um, several, um, text dot improvements that, um... The, well, let me say it this way. There are identified opportunities to alleviate major congestion. Um, there is significant conversation about the 304 intersection and the traffic movement, particularly from Lowe's and the Burleson Crossing Shopping Center. Staff had an extensive conversation with the district engineer and the assistant district engineer, um, several months ago about this very situation. When this intersection was designed originally, it was out in the middle of nowhere. And so what, um, their perspective was they built it for a design that they just really didn't think would happen, and that is that we would develop to the extent that we have. Essentially what, um, is important is the intersection is signaled to deal with the service road traffic, not the traffic coming off of the shopping center or 304. So there really isn't a solution that we can, uh, augment today without significant reconstruction of that intersection. Um, there is some, uh, congestion that is happening at some of the other intersections and each one of them is set to handle traffic the same way. And we talked to the engineers and the, and the rationale is, is that you train a driver to treat each one the same way. Well, not all intersections are the same. And so we have talked to them about just make it function better and we'll learn what we need to do as we get there. So they're going to study those to see if there are any improvements. But both of those are great ideas, but we have no jurisdiction over them. So we will share them with, um, text dot. Oh, there was one more on there about, um, the summer feeding program and a request for us to, um, feed the, um, the children, uh, during the summer. I reached out and had a conversation with Dr. Christie Lee at the school district. And the school district, um, is going to, uh, feed all children that, um, need to be fed, that are 18 years and younger, at their elementary, uh, schools across their school district. They will feed at the junior high and high school as long as there is summer school, Monday through Thursday. So this is an important need, but the school district's working very hard to ensure that it's being met.
Wanted to bring up, but wouldn't the, our plan to do the roads for the north-south traffic really work to help those intersections quite a bit?
The service roads?
Yeah. She's talking about the east-west, like Agnes and...
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
East west to east. North and south of 71, so that, so that the community can move around without having to go to 71.
We really do kind of want a plan for that. I mean, I get we have no jurisdiction on the text dot, but we are working so that we kind of have our own town access.
Yes, ma'am. The accessibility that to the south will become Agnes, um, absolutely is a city BEDC project and the same thing to the north. So when we have another option besides that, that will alleviate some of the congestion. Yes, ma'am. Um, Agnes is currently under design and needs to be the first section built in conjunction with Seton Hospital and the BEDC board has made that commitment. Um, it is currently being designed so it can be constructed. Uh, Jean, Trey, and Jerry, um, are having multiple conversations with some additional property owners between, um, Seton all the way to Pecan Park, the residential subdivision, so that we can finalize an alignment and we can begin to start working on funding or encouraging funding of the additional sections. This, um, list, and there are six, deal with water quality, um, water pressure, and the, what he calls the aesthetics. I call it the stuff that will keep my dishes from getting scratched up. But we have dealt with this issue as a part of the, uh, water wastewater retreat in April. And when we build a consolidated water treatment plant with ozone filtration, every one of these issues will be addressed. So I would say to you that, um, we already have a plan to fix these things.
But we need to be realistic that that's several years out.
That's four years out. Yes, ma'am.
And, um, Trey, that 16-inch line that was just, is going to help with some of that, isn't it? With your back pressure and...
It should absolutely help as far as, um, what we've done is connect two zones together. Um, so if, if Bob Ryan is having issues, you can move water from each side of the city back and forth and supplement. Yes, it should help.
So I, again, you know, we have a long-term solution, but that, that's a long way out. So we are doing what we can and that 16-inch line that was just completed is a good step in the direction of trying to address this.
Absolutely. That'll help with the velocity issue. So when there's a quick change in velocity due to all these returns coming on at night, that'll help support that to make sure that...
And, and you and I know when that pressure drops and it comes back up, that gets...
Stirs everything, that's right.
As I would say to Linda, it gets the gunk off the inside of the pipes and that's also what you have to flush through. So if you don't have those pressure variations, it helps the overall water quality that the resident receives.
Yes.
The, the other thing that I believe in, um, Trey can jump in if I'm incorrect. I do think that some of our residents are treating their lines with an iron treatment.
Um, so I've had some discussions with some citizens about, um, cleaning their water softeners with the iron be gone or something like that, just to make sure that, uh, that's completely flushed out before you turn your water back on. Because we've had some of their laundry turned orange or something like that. It's because they're stripping all the iron off the, the charged ions in the water softener and then washing their clothes. So you need to give that time to clean out before you, uh, do a load of laundry.
The two items at the bottom that are highlighted, one is to widen Lover's Lane. Uh, that is from, uh, someone that lives in the ETJ and, um, that is a, um, Bastrop County, um, project. Uh, we also, um, the bottom one that you really can't read is wider sidewalks downtown. And then, um, I, you're not going to read these, but it was just to prove, um, the scope of magnitude. Uh, the second highest, um, submittal was a YMCA facility. We had 18 submittals, nine from residents and nine from nine non-residents. So the number one, uh, request out of the 104 participants was a pool and there were 19 that were interested in a pool. Number two was a YMCA facility and there were 18 interested in that. And then numbers three, four, and five tied for third. And that was at seven each. And seven, um, had an interest in a community rec center slash sports complex, some kind of organized, uh, recreational opportunities. Uh, there were seven for street maintenance and seven for drainage improvements. So this is a summary of our CIP survey. Um, at this point in time, uh, mayor and council, uh, I would say to you, 90% of it you've talked about, you have a plan, or we're in the process of bringing you information to make decisions. Um, what we have not discussed and don't have, uh, any direction in either, uh, you can give some feedback tonight, you can tell us when you want to talk about it, uh, or how you want to proceed, would be the recreational aspects of this, whether it is the indoor pool, outdoor pool, uh, the YMCA facility, or the sports complexes.
Does anyone on council want to make a comment? Councilmember Ennis?
I know that quite a bit of work has been done on this in the past and I think it's time that we as council either identified a group of folks, uh, community folks to start putting together a plan or, or, uh, at least we need to be working for the future on this. Um, it's, we've, in the past, it's been worked on and then it's been put on the back burner and then worked on and put on the back burner. And I think it's time to really start throwing some effort into a community effort to come up with a viable plan to, uh, bring a coalition to the table that maybe can fund this. I mean, I know that the, the Y has offered to, to staff and, and, uh, operate, but, um, I think it's, I think it's a, a project that's reached its time.
Councilmember Jones? I know, it's just, I think the same thing. YMCA is all over this. And that just seems to be something we should be able to figure out as a community. I mean, just every single, almost every single one of those asks are something that the YMCA has in their wheelhouse, so.
I don't disagree with that at all. And I think from a, from a citizen's standpoint, we've talked about the many things that we have on our plate to do and I don't think adding a recreation department to try to staff and, I don't know why in the world we would reinvent that wheel. One of the things that, in my opinion, that the YMCA brings to the table, something that we do not have at all, is all of, how to hire a lifeguard, how to train those people, how to do the classes, all the curriculum for it, the ability to hire staff and that type of thing. So, um, several of us know there was, there was quite a history in a deal and not a deal and the deal back on. And at, at this point, there's no point in going all the way back through that history. But, um, based on the survey results that we've gotten, because when I look at 18 people asking for a Y and 19 people asking for a pool, I look at it as 37 people asking for a Y because I, I think that, and not to mention the folks that were wanting community sports. Um, I think a key element for the Y is their membership for all so that it addresses the fact that it's not an economical issue for someone to participate. They also have the ability to get outside of the city limits. So, um, one of the things that I would like to offer up as far as the community, um, Councilmember Ennis, are you opposed to it? Would you want it to be studied to consider whether or not it should be the Y as the, as the, the vehicle to address this? Do you want to have a committee to discuss that? Or do we want to take the step of, like, uh, you know, um, I could write a letter on behalf of the citizens because we have the CIP result, if I have councils, and, and we may have to put this as an action item, um, later. But we could write a letter that maybe we let the YMCA... but we could write a letter that maybe we let the YMCA of Austin, because it's a business decision for them, that we are serious, we want to have a conversation. What does it take? How do we, how do we move forward? And, because what I don't really want to do is have a committee to have a conversation if it's gonna get back to, okay YMCA, what do you need for us to have a YMCA in Bastrop?
I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. And the wheel has already been designed, and I think we just need to, like you say, go to the Y and say, how can we make this work in partnership? And what other, what other people can we bring to the table to, to make it cost-effective for us and for them, et cetera, et cetera? I do want to say that we've done a lot of talk in this council about quality of life, and this is a quality of life issue for sure for our citizens.
I agree with that completely. I'm seeing, Councilmember Peterson, do you have something to say?
Yes, just briefly, ma'am. I totally agree that partnership with the Y will be a solution to where we're trying to go with this. And I would, you know, we're talking about rec, we're talking about sports, we're talking about pool, and we also talked about a skate park. And I would see that, see that like added to the list of what we're gonna talk to the Y about and try to get our heads together and see if we can make it happen.
That's a great point, the skate park could be in that as well.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One other thing, talk about the skate park, and it's been kind of bugging me over the last few months, the State Park Trail. If we could include in the design of the, of the State Park Trail, maybe, you know, I don't know how close it's gonna be to Highway twenty-one, but maybe we can include some fencing in the design, because I can truly see that being a skateboard racetrack, if you will. And it's, it's just been bugging me that that trail's gonna be that close to ninety-five, I mean, excuse me, not ninety-five, but twenty-one. And it just, it seems we should have some kind of barrier along that trail.
I'm sure Trey's taking notes, that hopefully they've already addressed it. You're exactly right, it may not be designed for skateboards, but it may just be like candy in front of a baby, it's gonna turn into skateboard. Was that Mayor Proton Nelson as the parks liaison, you have comments for us?
Sure. The, you already have a proofable resource in, in the YMCA, and I'm in complete agreement with Councilmember Ennis, that we need to nurture that relationship and enhance it in whatever way we possibly can to, to move this project along to create the, the quality of life issues that we have discussed. So I'm, I'm all for it. And YMCA is certainly in place and certainly capable of fulfilling that role.
So what I would like to do with y'all's permission, I'll have a conversation with the city attorney and see if maybe I draft a letter and we may be able to just let you guys see it, or do I need anything else?
I don't think it's needed, Mayor, you've got consensus that's pretty strong. I think you write it and send it, and then when the Y comes back, we can do a workshop or something and bring counsel. But I think you're operating very clear-
Okay, I will start working on that letter tomorrow. And the other thing I want the community to be aware is there could be a portion of those discussions that will be behind closed doors. When you start talking about location and, and some of the partners and how things are gonna go, you know, we may, there are some things that we may have to do behind closed doors before we can have an open discussion, but we will certainly discuss things openly as fast as we can. Yeah, Council, Councilmember Rogers, did you have anything you wanted to say about the Y? Okay. All right, so I, I just happen to know, because I can feel their eyes in the back of my head, that we have the executive director and the chair of the YMCA board. So if you have suggestions for wording on the letter, if you'd like to co-sign the letter with me, I've, I've tried to publicly encourage him to build the building, so we will, we'll do all we can. It sounds like we're interested. That doesn't mean that suddenly the city of Bastrop can write you a check to do it, but we, we want to have a serious conversation about how we can improve the quality of life, not only for the citizens of Bastrop, but also for the citizens that live in the ETJ. And I think the YMCA is well-equipped to handle membership fees and rates so that if we are using citizen tax dollars in some form or fashion, that they, you know, get a cheaper membership rate. We want to be fair to our citizens, but we need the facility, is what I hear you guys saying. So I'll start working on that letter and, and working with the, with the board. Okay. So with that, we're an hour and some minutes in. Do you guys want to go to two C, or do you need a five-minute bio break? Okay, everybody's fine. All right, we're going to two C, discuss Main Street road project and parameters. Okay. Let's get started. We had a sound clip, but I don't know that the sound on the TV is working, so it's kind of anticlimactic.
Picture black and white silent film music playing in the background.
So at any rate, it's pretty good. It's stinky now, I found. Oh, good. I'm telling you, every time the Irish girl gets in charge of the PowerPoint, there's- So, yay, we're gonna get there. Those are that black and gold comment she made. I know, I'm in trouble, yes. Oh, good. I told them I didn't want to be in charge of the clicker. Anyways, let's get started and see if this works. We're going to kind of talk a little bit tonight about the Main Street Improvement Project, which I think has gone, you know, by several different names depending on who you talk to. You may see it referenced in this presentation as the MSIP, which is what we refer to it staff-wise. We're in government and use too many acronyms. Oh. There it goes. I don't know. So when we were reviewing the slides with Linda, she's like, we need silent movie music. So we, her wish was our command. So, and this is really Trey's baby, but I guess I'll start. Downtown has had a lot of minor improvements through the years. There's been several different pieces of downtown in Main Street that have seen different variations of makeovers and improvements. But really, a community vision for the entire downtown district with Main Street and the Colorado River at the heart has never been completed and seen to fruition. So it's important to remember that decisions that we make today will shape the look of Main Street for the next generation. There, it's good. I promise it's not gonna be music throughout. Okay, y'all are done. We're gonna turn it over to Mr. Job.
Just saying, my video worked the first time, if you noticed that. I'm just gonna, so, so what we talked about is, is it's not just about the street itself, right? We know that, we know what the score is in the PCI. It really just caused for an overlay or a few things like that. But we're talking about extracting the DNA from downtown and infusing it into some piece of art that you want your Main Street or your Main Street corridor and downtown area to be. Those are several funding sources over the last few years. Again, some of the time I got to spend back in the vault, there were several grants that were available. There were some with Orca, the transportation alternatives with Tech Stock, and then the Community Development Block grants that did some of the work downtown. Some of the improvements that we saw from those grants was the lighting that you see, the sidewalks down Chestnut, sidewalk repair, drainage, intersection improvements, it looked like this, the cobblestone, the lighting and the raised medians. And then one of the first projects I did when I came to work here in 2012 was we put the pedestrian bridge there over Deals Branch. And that's just a picture of it being installed. I don't know if I clicked too far. All right, there we go. So there's still work to be done, let's talk about that. As you can see, this is where we're at today, some of the existing conditions. They're in the right-hand corner, the lower right-hand corner. It's something that's technically relatively easy to fix, but you'll see as we go to the PowerPoint, we have a lot of issues downtown. So there's really no easy way to get the fix done. So we have some more examples here where the trees are buckling the sidewalk. And again, here down by the aisles.
Yeah, so let's talk just a little overview for those who are not familiar with the history of what we refer to as the Main Street Improvement Project. The Main Street Design Committee spearheaded and the efforts and went to the city and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and expressed the need for sidewalk improvements downtown, widening the sidewalks, making downtown more pedestrian-friendly and making it more visually appealing and attractive. So in 2014, the city issued bond debt that the EDC has been paying for. At that time, city leadership instructed staff, and the process began, that downtown is very unique, and Trey will go over it, the city does not actually own all of the sidewalks. And depending on which part of Main Street you're on and where your legs intersect, the, the crack in the sidewalk, you may be on two different pieces of property. And so some of the sidewalks are owned by property owners, some are owned by the city, and some patches of sidewalks have both. And so before they went into the design phase of the project, so we issued the bond debt for seven hundred, or eight hundred thousand dollars. But before we actually designed the project, the staff was instructed in the community that we needed to get seventy-five percent of the easements in the proposed project area.
So the bond with the eight hundred thousand dollars, was that for the sidewalks or for the whole?
We're gonna talk about that, let me, I don't want to speak incorrectly. So we have not been able to locate any type of, you know, legislation or policy that was set by council to dictate that seventy-five percent. And this, this is an excerpt from a PowerPoint presentation in 2013 that did say that we needed to get seventy-five percent of the easements prior to September first, 2014, to start the design phase of the project.
One of our calls from the council meeting where this happened, we were having a lot of trouble acquiring the easement, saying we hadn't reached that. It was somewhere around fifty percent. That bond issue was part of a larger bond issue for other things that were done in the economic development industrial part. And the eight hundred thousand dollars was a portion of it. So there'd been discussion about giving it back to the EDC if we never reached that seventy-five percent.
Here's the original scope. So on the prior slide, it says, and I understand we're saying we didn't find final documentation on it, but the seventy-five percent in order to start the design, is this all a way of saying the design never got started?
The, the, the design never got started, that's correct.
Just trying to figure out where we are.
There was some, a small amount of engineering work and some survey work done, a couple of PowerPoints put together, but the design never started.
So the design was never started, and an assumption, unless somebody has better memory of history, is because that this threshold of seventy-five percent arbitrary or not wasn't met, design didn't start, that's where we are.
Correct.
Yes, and when I arrived in 2016, I think that part of that issue was, is that it's very difficult to get a property owner to sign off on a blank check, essentially for the city to do something to their property that they don't know what it's going to look like.
When you started, when you're saying design, you're talking about final design, right? Because I think we, there were some preliminary designs done, weren't there?
No, in 2016 and 17, but not at this original start date.
So this was the original scope of work, and that was to be a solid concrete street south of Pine to Farm. The water line was gonna be replaced, and then sidewalks south of Pine to Spring Street.
And that's the bond language there. For eight hundred thousand dollars? You thought, they thought they could do all three of those things? Or eight hundred thousand was only supposed to be a part of it?
Well, and part of the issue, and we issued the bond debt, but we didn't have the designer, any real cost estimates, then.
Well, and the water lines would be funded, that wouldn't be funded, the EDC-
That did not include the utility work.
Okay. Yeah, I can get past the concrete street from Pine to Farm for eight hundred thousand, can you?
No, that's, no, that's, that's high. How low?
Proceeds from the sale of the certifications will be used for constructing, improving, extending, and/or expanding city streets, including drainage, sidewalks, parking, and right-of-way. So the bond language is not specific, so. So where we are today, if you're looking back at that seventy-five percent, we've fifty-four total easements needed in that original project area scope. Twenty-two we have not been able to get signed to date. And as I mentioned a minute ago, I think that if you had a concrete, not a concrete, but a firm design plan and some visual aesthetics, there's probably some that are on that list that you will be able to get. You know, and I think that there may be a few on that list that are going to take a little bit more than design work to get them to sign.
So we're gonna talk about the public and the private, the differences in the sidewalk. Like I said, this one, there's no easy button there. So we're just gonna deal with it as what it is button, because that's what we have to push. But the, the range varies from anywhere from ten foot of sidewalk owned privately to ten inches of sidewalk. So here's, so what, in yellow is what belongs to the city, and in red is what belongs to the property owner. So to give you an idea of where we're at, the parking lot there at the top is the Alley D parking lot. The Kershaw parking lot is below, and to your left at the fork and knife is Grace Millers. Grace Millers. So to give you an idea of where we're at, this is Pine Street, and this, this was, this project was supposed to be from Pine Street all the way back as well. Here we are, the, the one here on the left with the museum showing is actually a little bit deceiving because we do own the property of the museum. So it is technically city-owned, but it is a, but is with that building, not necessarily in the right way.
But we hadn't signed the easement in 2016, the city.
Right, so we gave ourselves an easement.
We signed our own easement.
But the point is, you can see how difficult this is all the way down. And if you'll note it where those trees were buckled and the, the cobblestones were really messed up, you can see all of that is on private property right there at the top. So that's something that we can't fix. So we had to do something about acquiring the property, getting the easement or something like that to get that fixed.
Or enforcing the property owner to fix it and be in compliance with federal law.
There's that too.
What do you mean by that? Excuse me.
Whether it's the city or not, you have to meet ADA compliant regulations. Trey's gonna get to that. So if it's not in public domain for us to fix it, and it is public domain because we walk on it every day, then if we aren't allowed to fix it, then the property owner will need to fix it as a part of this process. Because having an ADA issue, whether we own it or not, in a public domain cannot go unaddressed. He'll, he'll get to that in just a minute.
Again, this is just another shot of Main Street, to give you an idea of where you're at. You see the chambers there down in the right-hand corner. Continues all the way through. Across Chestnut. There by the school or the church, that's all privately owned. It looks like essentially just the curb. The, the, the-
Yes, the old First National Bank building, across the street from the current First National Bank.
So to give you an idea, there's a lot of challenges there that we're gonna have to-
And that's one long piece of red, but that could be several property owners, right?
That's correct, yes, that's not, I'm just giving you a point of reference.
That corner may be one piece, but then each one of those buildings could be a different?
Yes, that's correct.
And this does not reflect the signatures you've already got?
No.
No, this is just to show you what's privately owned and what's public.
These were done at the beginning of the project in 2013 or 14 when they set out to gain the seventy-five percent of easement.
So what we did was we took the rendering from the Form-based code, and this is kind of the visual aid that we're gonna use when we talk to the property owners. We actually are under contract with an engineering firm to do that, to help with the contact. And we did that in 2016 or '17, or just prior to your arrival. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about ADA compliance. So on May 12th in 2016, when we were getting ready, we were having those discussions with, with the Main Street Committee about redoing Main Street. We pointed out there's ADA compliance. So we went through, and what we were noted for in non-compliance, as far as the city, because they did not take into account the downtown areas that were in non-compliance, because we were paying for the study, they were only looking at the public issues. But some of the cross slopes exceeded two percent. There's a change in elevation quite a bit because we don't own all the properties, so there's drop-offs here and there. Protuding objects into the route, so tables, flower pots, several different things like that. And then on-street parking. So what he means by that is there was, the ADA parking that is on Main Street does not meet current laws.
So since that study was done in two thousand and sixteen, is there a mandated compliance timeline associated with that?
That I don't know.
Um, I can't speak to that, but much like what we're running into right now as businesses expand, one of the challenges is having ADA compliant restrooms. So I think that as, um, we update our building codes and certain businesses expand or change occupancy or trigger the law, uh, those improvements would have to be made. Um, one of the questions that, um, we'll ask the attorney is in public space or space that's, that acts as public space, what the compliance is.
You know, it's one thing, well, we didn't know, well, now we have documentation. So I got, I didn't know if there was, if we are required by federal government within a certain period of time to?
And that is why we brought it up in two thousand and sixteen, because we did know. Um, and that's how we ended up hiring an engineer to get started. Uh, then the project stalled again, so we're bringing it back so we can make some decisions on which direction we wanna head. Do we wanna just fix our own, do we wanna acquire some property, and so on and so forth.
Trey, ju- just a moment, ADA's been around since nineteen ninety.
That's correct.
And architectural barriers have, have been very clear and have been updated on there. Do we not have the ADA architectural barrier, uh, manual at our planning department? Whenever, uh, somebody applies to, to improve their facility or change the facade?
Yes, so there, there is a requirement, especially if you've received any public funds. Um, we do have some historic buildings, so you get some breaks on some of that. Um, and it's just, that's, that's exactly what we're working on with the subdivision ordinance. But yes, if, if you receive public funds, it's nineteen ninety-four, you're absolutely correct. Um, you have to come into ADA compliance.
If you make more than fifty thousand dollars in renovations to your property. Catcher, but what this consultant looked at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trey, um, is the sidewalk ADA accessibility. And so they weren't going into the individual businesses and, um, making sure that the doors opened a, a certain direction or, um, checking for, you know, wheelchair widths and aisles or ADA accessible restrooms. This was just a look at the sidewalks and the public space downtown.
Right, and this?
Well, that, that was, that was my point, a- access, uh, public access to that area is, is impacted by the, uh, condition of the sidewalk, whether the private or public. So that's, that's where, it, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where we're going to apprise the private sector of the accessibility issues.
Yes, yes, and that may be moving a table, or it may be removing a flowerpot, or it may be just a small amount of concrete work that needs to be done, or just leveling up these pavers. I mean, that's, this is honestly, uh, something you can do in an afternoon. But trimming the tree, uh, branches up to eighty inches for people that are visually impaired so that they don't run into stuff when they're walking through, um, which I've had them do all that kind of stuff. But we were in such a, a limbo with what we were doing with the concrete, that's what's lacking and that's the part we need to talk about finishing. Again, these pictures, just so you see, so we can do something more creative, um, I don't necessarily know that, I don't really think.
We're not gonna let them paint that golden black.
And we won't use those colors, but we could have something that has our, our logo or our bridge or our name on it. So what the report did, not taking into account, again, was the private property. However, it did mention that the majority of the businesses were not compliant. So they weren't looking for that, but they did point out that this step here, or that the tables were absolutely an issue. Um, but here's the problem, if we don't own the property, it, it doesn't matter. Um, so again, property owners, um, who completed renovations using the public funds, uh, since nineteen ninety-four, I touched on that, and saw grants, they actually required to come in with the fines. Uh, the original amount in the city bond, uh, that was funded was for eight hundred thousand. There's seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and thirty remaining, so we were very cautious with that money. Uh, and some of the preliminary engineering was performed, um, and estimated cost now is at, is at one point three million. Now, we did change the scope of work, so we'll talk about that, right, a difference of five hundred thousand in four years.
Zero, that's, that's five million, my friend.
Oh, no, that is five hundred. Yes.
We're just seeing if we're paying attention, I appreciate that.
Um, so fiscal year seventeen, um, City Baskdrop entered into an agreement with WM Design, uh, the same people that work on the State Park Trail, um, because they're, they really do a good job at the, um, indefinite quantity field engineering type sidewalks. So they say, hey, we've got this much sidewalk needs to be done, they get the cheapest price, and then they make all the decisions in the field. You don't have to have that traditional plan set that takes three or four months to design and everybody argues over. And basically what they were gonna handle was the property owner coordination, uh, the design phase, the smittles, the bidding, the construction phase, and the, uh, accessibility coordination. Um, and their estimated cost to do that is seven three thousand, three hundred and seventy.
So fiscal year twenty seventeen wasn't that long ago, so where do we, they're done, they're not done?
They're not done, we have not, we have, we have held them off just because there has not been, um, any appetite to, to move forward on this, so.
I don't think it necessarily been appetited, but there's been so many projects and so many questions and so many, um, activities and priorities happening, um, that this is on the list of things that need to be done and need to be discussed and, and talked about, and we are here today to do that. And that we have not had the opportunity internally, the Main Street Design Committee, um, talked about it on a monthly basis for, you know, probably more years than we want to count, um, and continue to do so. And over the last, um, so I think the contract was signed in November, December, Marvin Townsend signed the contract.
He did.
Um, and then, and we had a change in leadership and we had a lot of other things that were pressing.
Y'all hear me talk about bandwidth, we have not had the bandwidth to talk about this. The first twelve months, as y'all well know, we spent all of our consumable time on water, wastewater, developing a plan, and we literally are just now getting to this point.
That, that's fine, I'm just trying to figure out where are we? So we, we signed a contract and it sat there or they got started?
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that, okay.
But wasn't the other hesitation?
This is why you didn't get the PowerPoint.
The easements, correct, yeah, we had gotten.
That was the other challenge is?
We'd gotten all the easements we could.
Do we move forward with the design when we don't have all the easements?
And that's where I'm getting lost, because I thought there had been a threshold of seventy-five, you were at sixty-eight, so, uh, if you signed a contract, it sounds like somebody made a decision to go ahead?
We thought that if we had the design, that you could get a portion of the remaining easements done.
So go back one slide, so, because the design phase is, is pretty far down that list, but you're, so the, the thought process at the time was hire these people, come up with a design, and we'll go back to the other twenty-two with a better, prettier picture and see if we can get them to sign the easement.
Correct.
Did they finish that part of it?
No.
And you're gonna talk about that, so you want me to quit asking you a question?
No, that's a good question, there's, they're great. So we did change the scope of work, um, to make it a lot easier to do and let people, give people an idea of what we were gonna have. And that included a, a milling field, a milling overlay, uh, from Spring Street to Farm Street sidewalks only. And then after the initial talk, we sat down with, uh, the group and kind of came up with a hybrid design of form-based code, what we currently have, just to make something that's a lot more, uh, I mean.
Pedestrian-friendly, um, somewhere that makes downtown a more attractive place to, to come and sit, that was also in line. I mean, I think some of the original discussions and plans that I had dug up did not, um, align with form-based code. Um, and my thought process and several of our design committee members is we spent all this time, energy, effort, and money on form-based code, and so we really want the design to reflect what was put in form-based code.
Absolutely, and you look at the pictures down at the bottom, right, this is again, some of our marketing on your right-hand side. To the left, this is your rendering of nine twenty-one and the EDC and what they plan on doing there. So you've got downtown happening, we know we wanna keep with the existing characters, we wanted the sidewalks to match the same thing, um, and make it feel friendly. So what they've done, the type of work we've talked about, um, is one, maintain the historic relevance, addressing the ADA issues, providing pedestrian safety. We're talking about slowing the traffic by narrowing the driving lanes, um, and then adding planting zones like you saw in that picture originally, um, and then with a nice ADA compliant here, uh, to walk down as well. And kind of soften the, uh, overall infrastructure of the area. And this is what they were, uh, looking at now, to add extra planting areas in and around, the lighting bumping the sidewalks out, uh, and things of that nature. The sidewalks could be widened, yes, that's correct. So when the sidewalks are widened, uh, I think it, it varies because of the, the, the right-of-way width on the south end of Main Street and the north end of Main Street are different. Uh, some of the buildings are set back farther.
Can I just ask you a question? Because these, when I owned a restaurant downtown in nineteen ninety, ninety-one, these were the exact discussions that were being made. And so I think a lot of the issue was, and I know this is a detail, but people were arguing about whether it should be concrete or brick. I mean, that was like a huge standoff, you know, it's just people couldn't agree. And if we're gonna deal with a lot of people that will not assign as easement, can't we make it? It just seems like you could make it a topping on that sidewalk that would make it real easy for people to participate. And not make it terribly complicated, but I mean, I'm sure that's something that you thought about, but that's always been one sticking point is people's opinion about how it.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussions about the different types, we wanted plank, uh, wood, yeah, yes, they did that in two thousand and eleven and twelve. So this conversation's still ongoing. I can't tell what section this is, but, oh, between Spring and Chestnut. Um, if you look, so again, they would bump out the areas, uh, give a lot more green space, maintain your ADA compliance there in the blue. And that kind of gives you a buffer for traffic, if you look at how the cars pull out of the, uh, through that alleyway in there near the bank, um, that absolutely, uh, helps with pedestrians as they're coming through and, and bumps that traffic out a little bit farther. You have to inch out the seat so you're gonna slow down, again, just making it a much nicer, safer feel. Main Street. We are not taking parking away, so what's gonna, so what will happen is your driving lanes will become narrow. So if that makes any sense, it would all be parallel, that's correct. You would lose, um, uh, two parking spaces, I think, at each block. I have to go back and count, but I can, I can do that if you wanna ask that. So you can see you have eleven-foot driving lane on the detail there, um, and currently I think they're about fourteen. Yes.
Trey, that's showing angle parking, you're talking about it's all gonna be parallel parking.
Uh, that, that's just the, um, I don't know if you can see that, but the.
It's currently parallel parking now.
That's, that's, that was the aerial view was, that they used to put this on, was parallel, I was diagonal.
My question is, because it's indicated as, uh, angle parking there with eleven-foot lanes, does that, does that change, does it increase the lane?
Those Ts are the parallel parking, so it, it's just a picture and they put it over the top. So it's parallel both sides and then two narrower lanes.
Yeah, the aerial itself, which is diagonal, but you can see that these bump out. That's where actually the parallel parking.
And Councilmember Jones, if there was a, a discussion, let's say, between should it be concrete or brick, I've, and I don't even wanna know how many times there's been discussions between angled and parallel.
Well, the good thing about, uh, being public property is you get to make the decision on the finish and the, um, and the road surface and things of that nature.
Does this take into account the, uh, ownership of the different, uh, levels of sidewalk? I mean, do we have to deal with that with this plan?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is part of the engineer's, um, responsibility, they would go in, meet with the folks, show them the renderings of what we're gonna do, they're also an architectural firm, so I'm sure they'll have some nice pictures. Uh, then they'll turn around, get those easements signed, uh, and move forward.
Let me, you know, Trey had the, there's not an easy button, um, and so, you know, when you start researching and uncovering and you hear information, this is a very complicated project and that has, um, a lot of history associated with it. Um, it's something that people feel very strongly about, one way or the other, whether that be wide sidewalks or narrower sidewalks, or their dining tables in front of their business, or their sandwich board signs, it's something that, um, council and staff gets complaints about when, um, someone, um, that needs handicap accessibility can't get downtown. Um, it's a project that was set up with some unrealistic expectations, in my opinion, from the get-go to get to a certain number before we could even get in the design phase. The city failed to sign its own easement and those numbers weren't counted in the percentage, and I don't know why or what. Um, you know, it's just, it was never conceptualized well. We issued bond debt for a project that wasn't designed yet. And so why haven't we done anything on it in thirteen months? Because it's a very difficult conversation to have. Um, and we have, we're just now to the point where we can have that conversation with you guys. So we apologize that we signed the contract, um, last fiscal year and, you know, last summer, we, at the Main Street Design Committee and at the board level, um, you know, were told and talked to and we, we just kept batting it back and forth and we needed council direction and, and we had some change in leadership, and so it just wasn't time to have the conversation yet. And so that's why we're here tonight, because we're gonna, no matter what you guys decide or what direction we go, there's gonna be winners and losers, and there's gonna be people that are happy and people that aren't happy. Um, and it's gonna be a difficult process if we move forward with the construction. Um, there's gonna be some marginal business owners downtown that may not survive the process. And that's a harsh reality, but it's true. Um, and, and so when is the right time to go in and, and tear up Main Street? I don't know, the, the, um, result's gonna be beautiful and, and benefit the entire community for, it's gonna be the picture that, you know, we may paint next, um, and something that we live with for a long time, but i- it's gonna be a difficult process that's gonna have staff's phones ringing and your phones ringing, um, with complaints and issues. And so, um, we just hadn't had the conversation yet, so that's why we're here.
If you think you get complaints about it not being done now, you're gonna get a lot of complaints when you start construction.
So what you're do, what you're trying to do is come to us to set the whole mood or just basically set the parameters for how you want the project to move forward so it can just be settled? Is that workshop and settle?
Well, we never presume your answer, so we're not presuming that you have an interest in moving forward. But as long as there's debt funding on the books, there is an expectation it's gonna happen. So what we'd like for you to do tonight is have a conversation as to whether or not you wanna pursue the remaining components. Because if we're not interested in moving forward with the Main Street renovation project, then we'll deal with the repaving of Main Street through the street maintenance program. BDC is building Agnes, and you read the bond funding documents. So if we're not gonna use that, then perhaps council wants to give that money back to the BDC and let the board determine what is an appropriate use with this global statement with some other needs that they've identified that they could use that money for.
Well, hang on, I have a question for, and I don't know if it's for Tracy or if it's for the attorney. Whose money is it if BDC has funded it?
Well, the city sold the debt and BDC has been making payments on it every year that that money's been in our bank.
So one, one, to me, one of the first things we have to be really clear about is, is it a city council conversation or is it a BDC conversation?
So in the past, the Economic Development Corporation has participated with the city in the bond sales and has identified projects that they would be willing to pay the debt on. There's nothing legal, there's no resolution between EDC and the city. Yes, it's EDC's project money, which is why the city manager is saying that it's really the EDC board that determines, if, if it's not gonna be used for the Main Street project, they would determine what project they would want to use those funds on.
So is there, is there documentation somewhere saying that it's the Main Street project? Because certainly the bond verbiage doesn't say that.
A spreadsheet that identifies all the projects that that bond was for.
That's fine, and I'm not trying to muddy the waters, I just want us to be abundantly clear. And if it's not this body's decision to spend that money, then it seems like we need to be having a different conversation. Um, but if there is a spreadsheet and it sounds like everybody's in agreement, I, I mean, I think the community has heard of the Main Street project and what happened to the Main Street project, and I thought we were gonna make improvements to Main Street. So that being the case, um, I, I would like to know legally who, who owns that money, who owns that decision. I think that's something that we should get to the bottom of, even if that means that we need to put another resolution before, and clean it up. It, it shouldn't be, we're wondering, I, I think we should. It, it shouldn't be, we're wondering, I, I think we should clean that part of it up, but...
Mayor?
Yes.
I wouldn't clean it up if there's no interest in you doing it.
Well, I'm saying, I, I was almost done, but I think a, a more fundamental conversation, and Councilmember Rogers, when we had the joint meeting with planning and zoning and there was a conversation about needing citizens to, um, make their lot completely legal to the subdivision ordinance, and you said, "Well, now wait a minute, the city wants it, the city's benefiting from it, but we're asking the citizen to pay for it." I'm, I'm having that, for me personally, I'm having that same response with, I don't think it is a good use of the citizens' tax dollars if we have to go to eminent domain and condemn somebody's property to get access to an easement to improve their property and their business because they don't wanna cooperate with, with having a sidewalk improvement. I, I'm, I'm having a problem with that, and I think that's part of the discussion. Are you guys, do you have the political will that if it comes down to, and I don't know what the magic number is, and maybe there's not a magic number, but are you willing to say, um, and I'll just say myself, you guys have all signed the easement, we're all good to go, but I'm like, nope, not gonna sign it, not gonna cooperate. Are you gonna do eminent domain and condemn somebody's property, and I, I guess it's still condemnation to get the easement, to, to legally get the ability? Do we think that's a good way to spend citizen tax dollars?
So this is my question. Could lawsuits be initiated against the citizens that are not currently, uh, allowing ADA access?
Yes.
So, it just seems to me that we would have authority to override that so that we, we have to do it as a city to be compliant. So I guess we could initiate lawsuits against the cit, the, the people who don't wanna provide access.
Um...
Maybe it doesn't have to be eminent domain.
I, I think that...
I mean, I don't mean that, but maybe people should be made aware of their liability. And I would think if they were made aware of their liability, there would be cooperation.
Okay, so, assume that that's the case, but for one, and we're back to the mayor. And her analogy. If all of them are compliant, but for one, what, what is your political wherewithal, strength, stamina to make that one do something they otherwise would not do? That's the mayor's question, is it not?
Yeah, I can't help but get to, you know, like the, the previous council said, we want seventy-five percent of the easements before we're gonna get started. Well, I'm, I'm doing the, we all know, you don't go to court, there's an amount of money it costs just to go to court. And then you start adding that up by, okay, so, like, we would condemn one person's property, but at ten, you won't... There, there's just a point that I don't think twenty-five percent of the bond money, when people thought that bond was approved, it wasn't to pay somebody for not cooperating for making the improvements. I mean, I'm just, I'm struggling with that part of it. Now, the ADA compliance, that, that really does put another, you know, maybe it's a different conversation then. Hello, Ms. Jones, we'd like you to sign this sidewalk easement. If you do, we, the city, will bear the cost of making you ADA compliant. If you don't sign this easement, by the way, we'll be suing you because you, you are not ADA compliant. I mean, that sounds like just a lovely conversation to have with our property owners.
Now you know exactly the reason, and I've sat on the Main Street Board and on the Design Committee, now you know exactly why this thing has been in limbo for as long as it has. Because we're gonna have to belly up to the bar and say, are we gonna do this project? Or, you know, we're not gonna do it. If we're gonna do it, how do we deal with the folks who said, "I'm not, I'm not playing"? And, and how, how do we deal with that kind of issue on anything we're gonna be doing? That needs citizen, uh, private property involvement? And at some point, we're gonna have to say, are we gonna do the project? And is it, like you say, Mayor, is it worth telling these folks, "Well, I'm sorry, but we gotta do it"?
So, I mean, do we, we have, there's a committee together now where all these people are like members, and you're just like, when you have these meetings, it's just like twenty-two out of sixty-eight are just like, no. I mean, is that kinda how it's working?
I don't, and since I've been here, April of sixteen, we have not, um, gathered all of the property owners in a room to discuss easements. The easement work that was done before I arrived was done individually. Now, the Main Street Design Committee is made up of board members, volunteers, some business owners, and some property owners, um, and it's a, a small but mighty group, but it's definitely not representative of the entire, um, set of property owners that we need signatures from.
So, could we put together some sort of workshop where all the property owners are invited to that and see if there could be a soli, at, for, right now, and based on that meeting, if there's no, uh, consensus, if there's a lot of contention, if people aren't gonna work together, then I say we give the money back to BDC because we cannot...
I'm, I'm thinking that we just found some money for the bridge, you know, I mean, that's, that's an area that...
But I mean, let's give people a chance to, you know, that, because we're gonna have to fix what we own. It sounds like any which way the city is, the property that we own, we're gonna have to make it compliant.
Yes.
I wanna further complicate this conversation because I think we're reducing it to ADA compliance and it's way bigger than that. Um, there, there is, um, a lot of conversation about vacancy rates. Well, you changed the whole dynamic downtown when you widened the sidewalks. If y'all have not been to the city of San Marcos, you should. Because there are a number of, of restaurants that have outdoor park, uh, outdoor seating that have been extremely creative in how they've done that, that experience the outdoors and have really created, um, some unique space. And so there's an argument to be made that we could impact our vacancy rate by changing the experience you have. When we came back from, um, California, having gone to the retail and futuristic ex, what was it, the experiential? Thank you. Experiential conference, the mayor has said numerous times that in three hours, three things are gonna happen. I'm gonna have to eat, I'm gonna have to sit, and I've gotta go to the bathroom. You can do one of those three things downtown. You're not gonna sit unless you're in a restaurant, and you're not gonna go to the bathroom unless you're in a restaurant where they have a restroom. And so, part of this Main Street renovation project is, what do you want the picture to be? Because I appreciate there, and I'm gonna get slaughtered over this, but it is what it is. There, there is an expectation of the property in front of the business owners. But I think there are nine thousand people that own Main Street and Bath Drop. When I got here, there is a crowd of people that love Main Street, and every one of you have an enduring memory, feeling, or association with downtown and Bath Drop. So this isn't ADA compliant, this isn't really about a ten-foot strip in front of business. It is about what legacy do we want our future to be in downtown? And I think to some extent, we've made it about that ten-inch strip. But I think the mayor asked the spot-on question. Because if we don't deal with this, we're gonna be hard-pressed to, to, to address the vacancy question. We're gonna be hard-pressed to make improvements downtown for other things when the things that our form-based code has already agreed to, that as a community we've endorsed, as council has established as policy, as the vision that we want for downtown. So, I'm just throwing that in there, that I don't want this to be reduced to ADA compliance in front of your building, because I think the community feels way stronger about Main Street than that, so...
I understand, but I'm specifically talking about property owners and just why we fundamentally have to do it, I mean, even above and beyond that. And trying to get a connection, you know, a common cause here.
When is the last time we approached these folks about signing the agreement?
It was in the fall of twenty sixteen, it, summer of twenty sixteen.
And the ones we've got signed there are still valid?
Yes, the, yes, they're at the courthouse.
And there's been some property change of hands?
There has been a few property changes, yes, sir.
Could we check into what their viability might be and see if we can reduce that twenty-two and, and...
Absolutely, and we just hadn't wanted to spend any more staff time on the project until we got direction and had this public conversation about the project. And so we're happy, um, we, we dug up the files, getting ready for this to see how many were, and double-checked at the courthouse, um, on the number that were recorded and updated the spreadsheet, and we can definitely go back and, and re-approach, um, some of those property owners if you would like us to.
I have a question. I know you didn't want it to, um, go down to ADA compliance, and I just have a legal question, which your friend is not here. But I mean, as a city, if we don't require our property and the other properties to be safe to our public, wouldn't we be putting ourselves in liability of, we know about the problem, they can't say we didn't know about it? I mean, accidents have happened, so we are, we are really have got our heinies uncovered by not taking, at least taking care of the issues.
And that was my concern with the, was that, is there a mandated come-in-to-compliance once, once you've done the survey? But I think we're kinda having different layers of the conversation.
Actually, I think once we know there's a problem, and there has been, people fallen and have gotten hurt. As a city, we know there's a problem, I'm afraid we're working on just waiting for the next person to get at it.
We, we, we can pursue that. Um, the property owners can choose to fix it and you'll still be having the same conversation you're having now.
And that's what I, it, it's kind of degrees of a conversation, and, um, to the, to the point of a place to eat, a place to sit, a place, and, and what we had talked about is if you have to leave to take care of one of those things, they don't come back. And, and so part of what we're wanting, and even for our own local citizens, is, is to be able to enjoy themselves and stay downtown for more than in one hour. But, um, the public bathrooms, honestly, we can take care of public bathrooms and we don't need an easement from anybody. The ADA compliance, to your point, can be resolved without a Main Street improvement project. That can be, it could be reduced to the scope of, we're taking care of sidewalks being ADA compliant, and Main Street becomes a street like any other street in town with the PCI index, and it gets a seal code or the throw-and-go, whatever, whenever that's required. So the bigger conversation, and when the sidewalk easements are needed, is do, do we want to do this massive Main Street improvement project? And it's going to be painful, because you've gotta get the easements up front to, to, you guys have already talked about, you're gonna have to get everybody to agree to one design, and then when the construction starts, you can only imagine, Jerry and I can't even imagine what's under the ground that nobody knows about yet. So, construction's not gonna be smooth, businesses are gonna be interrupted, um, I can't help but think of the picture that we saw of the one restaurant with the tables outside. They may not be compliant, but there's always somebody sitting at them and enjoying breakfast, you know, so...
So that's my point. We can fix the, the access and the ramps fairly quick and fairly easy, and the concrete that's shifted, that's easy. The code enforcement that comes with making sure everybody else is compliant and removing those chairs is another butt-whip, and frankly, that you're gonna get, will you do any improvements on that?
Without the wider sidewalk, that's another huge political battle, um, and capital, the staff have the capital to...
What I was meaning on, on making it code-compliant, I was meaning is using that as a cart to get the wider sidewalks, to get the improvements made, not just to fix that. I'm just saying, use that vehicle to talk to those owners to get where we wanna go. And I'm not, I'm not asking you just to fix that, I'm just saying, use this wonderful cart that says, "Hey, we're about to get sued if you don't". That always makes people open their eyes that might be able to get us in the door to talk to them.
And I think that's what Councilmember Jones is talking about as well.
Well, but let me ask you another question. So, I mean, to me, you can take downtown and you can break it into four blocks, you know, the south and north, and then either side. Is there one section of downtown that we dominate as far as the easements, et cetera? Looked like there was one. Can we design the improvement project for that section and then, you know, move forward with that section, widen it, do the whole, you know, deal? And if everybody else just wants us to go in and, and smear around some concrete so we're ADA compliant, you know, go for it. You know, we'll just, we'll cover ourself on that deal, but if we have a block of people that can get along, so let's break them into four groups, and if this block can get along and this block can get along, guess what? We're gonna go. And if these can't, well then we'll just do the minimum and move, you know, just we're out. That's, I mean, just give people a chance to participate.
Before, before we can address the request that you made, I need to go back and see if y'all are willing to fund it if it all happens. So, we have eight hundred thousand dollars, of which about seven hundred and ninety is available. We estimate, and that's all it is, we don't have a design call, so we don't really have final numbers. We think it's one point three million dollars, but it could very easily come back and be two million. So, but before we get into how are we gonna execute, is this, are you willing to add five hundred thousand to a million dollars to this project to make it work if everybody signed it? And if I can get consensus on that, then we can go and break this project down into multiple elements.
Because all of these numbers do not include taking anyone to eminent domain. This is construct, design and construction only.
That is a mill and fill in the sidewalk improvement.
And also anything they find underneath there.
Well, that's the one point, that's why she's saying it could be one point three to two, though.
You know, another thing that would help in this construction is get back to, we have twenty-two who haven't signed. What are we talking about when we're talking about, uh, uh, these parcels that need to be ours? Is it a foot? Is it two feet? Is it the whole sidewalk?
Yes, sir.
It depends on where you are.
Well, it'd be helpful to know that kind of information too, because right now, we're thinking sidewalk, we're gonna have to pay for all this sidewalk. Well, if it's a foot, it's different.
The, the history of these easements are, is that we have paid ten dollars to each of the business owners under the premise of what the mayor has said. Is we're gonna come in and make improvements in front of your business that are gonna significantly add value, gonna significantly change the way you interact your business with the public space. And so, for ten dollars, the taxpayers are gonna, you're gonna get some real benefit by being a good team player. So, it's been ten dollars for each of the easements that we've bought to this point, or at least the easements that I've read.
Well, we've talked about the bridge, and y'all are willing to spend all that money on the bridge, and I'm going to say, as a property owner, as a businessperson who's consistently been in town, the conversation over the sidewalks has been much more aggressive, much more interest, and much higher expectation. So from my perspective, I think that we should attempt to move forward with this and support it as a council. I think it, it's very important, and it, you know, I walk downtown every day, and I think pretty much about every time I walk downtown, I trip. You know, if I'm talking to somebody, I mean, it just, the sidewalks, it's just, it's constantly, there's changes in the pavement and, you know, I've never fallen down, but I trip consistently, and it's a mess. And so I think that we should get behind this and just see, and if there's a workshop and if we can get a group of people to work together and do what we need to do, um, I'm, I'm willing to say let's move forward with it.
Councilor Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, very briefly. I, uh, it was the manager, I watched the work done in San Marcos. There was some business that, they, they did suffer some, and they, they let the public know they suffered some, and they, uh, had, had some reservations about it at first, but now, since the job is done, everybody's happy. So I'm gonna say, get her done.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Well, I've been listening intently to the conversation, and my, my concern is, is what's the exposure to the city legally, financially, and otherwise? Some work has gone into this, I think we should move forward to see where we, we need to go. I think it's ill-defined on what our pathway is, but I would at least like to, to, to add my vote to, or add my thought to the process of at least moving forward from this point. So, if yes, the staff or what, or city attorney to develop, determine process and options available. That's, that's where I'd like to see it.
Yeah, and so the easements that we have recorded were done by a previous city attorney, and, and you guys will know that when Ms. Umble got here, um, we had some clarification, you know, on the Texas Constitution about the city improving property that it does not own or have a right, um, to do work in. So he has those easements in hand, and, but we have not heard back, and so just to, to brace everyone, it's possible that those easements that we do have in place may need...
those easements that we do have in place may need some adjustment, um, and some other things. So, it's a process.
What I would like to do, Mayor and Council, if it's, um, okay with you, I think we have, um, in spirit, uh, we all appreciate this is an important program or project, but there are some legitimate questions that really do merit answers before we move forward. So, why don't you let us work with the city attorney, and either at the July budget workshop or at a July council meeting, we will put, um, the legal aspects of this project on the council agenda for discussion, and then with some better clarity of what's involved, then we can get some additional direction.
Councilor Riss, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm all in with it. I'm all in with everybody else.
My, I just want to put out there right now, when we're talking about a two million dollar project, I am really not interested in six hundred thousand dollars in legal fees to condemn property to do it. If, if the people who own the property don't want to cooperate, then it is what it is. I would like us to paint a great picture. I think it's a great deal. But quite frankly, if the people who own the property don't buy into that vision, I, I don't know how we can, we can force-feed that. Now, th- there's a threshold, right? If it's only one person, I, I'm not willing to walk away from it. I, I just don't personally think it should be this blank check of, we realize we may have to condemn some, and we're willing to pay whatever that is. I, I think we need to, so I think that's why everybody's kind of back to, let's have a, a updated conversation, because there's some folks I think are extremely frustrated, for, for a good reason. They, the bomb was passed, as they thought that project was going to happen. Have an updated conversation, and then every, better understand legally, because we may, if they don't want to cooperate, if they don't buy into the vision, we may be back to ADA and being able to walk without tripping.
I, I did want to add one thing, and I, just because I know that some business owners will be watching, that I think that this council and, and the leaders we have now are a little bit more, um, business-minded than they were back when they tore up the street in the middle of Christmas. That if we go forward, we definitely will be wise on when, when we...
And in phases, that would be...
I've already given him specific instructions.
I just want to make sure that we, anyone listening will understand, we are a lot wiser than we were ten, ten years, fifteen years ago.
And I think that's part of the, um, the idea of doing the, so you're not waiting on the full detail of the plans and be able to quickly make decisions. And, but the, and I love, I love your idea of the quadrants. I understand the spirit of that, but that may drive the cost astronomical, because really, you need to do the street at the same time. So, um, it, it's a great out-of-the-box question, and there may be a way to think about it, but the quadrants may turn into halves. Because I, we, once you start, if the sidewalk's wider, you need to take care of the street. It's hard to do half of the street, so... That's right. If, if, if there, if at the end of the day, there's three people that don't want to cooperate, and they're all right together, okay, well, then what can we do with all the rest of it? I understand.
I do think going out to get the easements will be better if you have a drawing. I mean, it was, you know, you can, I agree with what they were saying, is I'm not going to tell you you can do that without you telling me anything about what you're going to do. Not that I have any property downtown, but I think if, if you take some drawings with you, like you're planning to do, I think you'll get a better response this time.
Okay. Is everyone happy, comfortable? Councilor Riss, do you have anything else? Just, okay. All right. And staff, you got some direction? All right. So, we have one more item, and I think it's not going to take a, a ton of time. Are we okay? You want to take a quick break? Everybody's been going. All right. We're at two E. Discuss possible tax rate dedicated to street maintenance based on estimated increase in property tax valuations.
Mayor and Council, back in April, um, we had a, uh, budget workshop, and we spent some time talking about the pavement condition index. Trey took you on a journey, explained to you what the report was, how we reached the conclusions that we did. We debated excellent, good, fair streets, and the premise of keeping the good streets good, and streets reach a place where they're, uh, poor, or they have failed. And the only option then is to go in and actually rehabilitate the street, which is full, uh, uh, restoration. And there were a couple of questions that were raised during that meeting that bring us back to this. The first one is, how much do we think it's likely to cost? And then, the question was, um, do we want to, uh, raise taxes or dedicate anything from the tax rate to that? And before that question was answered, you asked the question, well, how much new money from existing taxes are we going to get relative to, um, growth? And so, the answer to that question is, is that we have seen an increase in property tax value of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year. And that's based on preliminary information that will change in July. And that's about one point five four cents. You're going to see from the answer to the question is, how much do we need, that that's really not sufficient to get it done. Um, we believe we have found a way to build a bridge that we can make some real improvements with street maintenance and not have to raise taxes or dedicate any existing money to that. So, that's going to be the teaser. Trey and I are going to, um, tell you how the story ends and take you on a few slide presentations, so that we can give you the background to then answer the question. So...
So, in an effort to get you out here before ten, we skip down to the, the new business. Um, but basically, we're still looking at a five-year pavement condition index cycle that we want to review the streets. Uh, but you remember, we had it in a seven-year maintenance cycle before. That's a little rich for our blood, so we looked at it at ten years. Um, and then we'll move forward. So, what I, what I did was I took the streets that in, are in that maintenance zone, and that maintenance zone is fair, good, and excellent. All right? So, there's twelve point nine miles of excellent, there's twelve point seven, twelve point four of good, ten point three of fair. And then, what I did was convert that, because we figured our cost in lane miles. So, to explain, in, if we looked at the slide earlier, lane mile is eleven foot wide, one mile long. Um, so you can have a one-mile stretch of str- street that has four lanes in it, and that's technically four lane miles. So, that's how the prices are broken down, just so you know. So, we'll talk a little bit more about what it costs to keep the good streets in good shape. Um, so again, our lane miles existing, we know that we have twenty-five point eight to crack seal. The overall, these all added together is a seventy-one point two. So, the good, the fair, and the, uh, excellent are added together for a crack seal that, because we're going to be doing maintenance continually as we go on, and these things are going to move up to the next level every time we do a level of maintenance. So, eventually, you're going to be required to maintain that seventy-one point two, um, lane miles of, with crack seal, and each one of those will get a treatment every three years. Um, you're, again, the same, uh, thing works for the streets that are good. And that costs about a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars a year to, uh, maintain those streets as they come up.
And that is putting a seal coat on them every ten years.
Yes, that's a surface treatment of some sort. And then, uh, the fair streets, and they're going to vary, because this is really where your money's going to need to go, because these are on the, these are the ones that are on the borderline. So, what we talked about on the last time was, at a score of a fifty-six and up, that's really where we want to stay, anywhere from fifty-six to sixty-four. And that sixty-four to seventy range is where you're working on the good and the excellent. So, we've got to get those up ten more points to make sure that we're, it's a lot cheaper maintenance in the future.
So, so let me break that down into, to blond speak. So, if you have an excellent street that you crack seal consistently every three years, that excellent street should stay in excellent condition a long time. So, if you've got, um, whether it is an excellent street that you're crack sealing, a good street that you're crack sealing, or a fair s- uh, street that you're crack sealing, every ten years, you've got to put a new surface treatment on top of it, so you have something to crack seal to. So, seventy-one point two lane miles, and each lane mile of crack seal is seventy-five hundred dollars. And you divide that by every three years, that's thirty-five thousand dollars a year in crack sealing. There is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars a year in surface treatment that you do, that's seventy-one point two miles over a ten-year period of time.
Right. So, that's seven point one two miles.
And that is your keeping the good streets good program. The next item he's going to talk to you about is the fair that you're going to get up to that point. So, and this becomes really important when we get beyond five years. So, the crack sealing and the surface treatment, we're going to do consistently as ongoing maintenance. The third category is to get us to that excellent piece.
So, what we talked about, um, because of the, because it's ninety thousand dollars a lane mile for this large amount, we would break that out over five years, and, uh, we're going to have to take that hit early on. Um, and that puts us at the, for the first five years, we would actually go to the five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, sorry. Uh, in that first five-year period. In year six, because these have moved up, the ones that were in fair condition have gained ten points, and they've moved up into good condition, they roll into the overall maintenance of that ten-year. And as they continue to roll up, they get all fed into the three. So, you would basically have a drop that gets you in the range that we discussed about in year six, which is that two hundred and fifty. And not to mention, as streets are added, um, if you look at the far right there, um, what I did was I take the seven point one two miles, and they move up, and then I figured that crack seal amount in. So, for every new street, every excellent street that comes on board, whether we accept it from a developer, whether we do some bond issuance and do rehabilitation on it, that street, that lane mile has to drop into that category. So, every time we put one lane mile of that in there, you have a thirty-five hundred dollar increase in maintenance each year, if that makes any sense. So, as we're improving, we're moving up, and we're adjusting for those costs. But the really heavy cost is to get us in the right place, so that we can maintain those, is that five-year window at the five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
So, one of the things that we can do is short-term tax notes. Make the investment to, to get all of your fair, good, and excellent streets in a condition to be maintained. And then, in 2021, Burleson Crossing Tax Three Eighty Agreement drops off. We have five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of money coming back to the general fund every year, of which now, you have a dedicated source that's been paying for tax incentives that can now go to keeping your gro- good streets good, because they've now all been brought up to a standard that you can now afford to pay for them.
So, you see the pattern here. And the pattern is, is that water, wastewater, streets, drainage, fundamental improvement projects, maintenance, like the bridge, the sidewalks have been ignored or passed on. And so, this council is willing to make the decisions, and we have a team at City Hall who is able to present those in a way that they can be made. Pretty impressive.
Agreed.
Can you go back a page?
Yep.
I know it's, I know it's s- small dollars, but in the first year, you don't have seventy-one point two miles that you can crack seal. So, so you've a little bit overstated it. Do you see where, what I'm saying?
I understand that. So, but you're going to have this continuing, ongoing maintenance. Um, and don't forget, we, these are all going to have to be cracked sealed at some point. So, what, and this is what, Linda and I had the same discussion today. So, the seventy-one point two miles is, is including all of these. We're going to have to do some maintenance on some of these to get them through that five-year period. And we're going to have to do some maintenance.
I understand, and, and it's such a small amount, but the, but the, but the truth is, on your actual spend, it, you may not get to that, that very first year, and then it'll level off at that, and then it should drop back down as you get all of them rolled up.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am. And so, the first, the first streets we will crack seal will be the concrete streets in Hunter's Crossing and the con- street, concrete streets in Riverside Cross, uh, Riverside Grove. So, that would be in year one.
I don't think there are any concrete streets.
In Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove.
No.
They're, they're asphalt, but you will have to, but you will have to crack seal.
We don't crack seal concrete.
Well, you have to crack seal every...
Wait, yeah, yeah, you do.
It's a joint seal, but it's the same thing. So, we'll...
But it, concrete streets is like what's in front of the high school. It's asphaltic concrete in, in Hunter's Cross. So, it's, it's a black...
We are having an engineer debate with the blonde, and I lost. Can I just say I lost?
But each of those...
You bowed out very well.
Every gutter line will have to be cleaned and cracked sealed before you put it on a surface treatment.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, that right there is about six lane miles.
And that's not included in all of it. Okay.
And that's, yes, that's correct. So, you can assume that every curb and gutter street is going to be some, done at some point. And I do understand that that is, you're right, you've been, it's been at the first year.
You're going to find plenty of other places to spend it.
But I guarantee you, there's something under the street, just like you were talking about earlier, we could use the ball.
Yeah. So, you're going to, we've done that survey, um, kind of to, to Councilmember Jones's point. This now puts in place a system and a structure where all of the streets are always taken care of. And I, as Joe Q's citizen, could be like, what are you talking about? I live on Bill Ennis Way, and my street's falling apart. And we will be able to say to them, you are scheduled, based on your PCI index, you can expect your street to be repaired by such and such date, and then that moves up, and then you'll expect. And your seal coat is not an overlay, right? Is, is it, is it an overlay, or is it a squirt top?
In the fair condition, it's your overlay. That's your structural overlay, or you may do a thin overlay if it doesn't need it.
But in the good condition, that's not an overlay, that's a squirt top.
That is a surface treatment. That's a, identification mineral bond or something like that.
What this does not take care of are the red streets that are poor or have failed. That is going to be a conversation where debt financing is the answer. Once those are taken care of, then they would be maintained in the excellent condition. And that would be the street we'd add four thousand dollars per mile, once we fixed it, to make sure that there's money to crack seal it, money to keep that seal after it. But, so this is just the good streets, good portion. And then, in the coming, um, weeks, we will have a conversation about the red streets, because the red streets are going to have to be prioritized based on traffic count. And you've also asked that we fix the water and the wastewater lines under the red streets, so that we're not tearing them up in five years when the infrastructure needs to be, uh, improved. So, Curtis Hancock and his team are already cammering all of the red lines in anticipation of this conversation, so we can prioritize water and wastewater line replacement funding with the street ref- uh, funding, and make sure that we're making smart investments. We have identified a neighborhood in North Bastrop we're going to talk to you about in July, because we have a grant for some wastewater pipe bursting. And while we're going to be up there working and doing that, there may be an opportunity to leverage some additional funding and really make a community development investment in a neighborhood and set it up for success for the next twenty to thirty years.
So, those bonded streets, i- in bad condition, and when we prioritize them with traffic counts or whatever, and make that commitment, we can also say to the citizens, if they will, with, with that bond money and that street improvement, it will then move into a street maintenance program, so that we aren't ignoring it, kicking a can, and then coming back and having to redo the whole thing. So, that's...
Yes. And that eventually gets to your overall hundred and twelve lane miles, because there's sixty, uh, four miles of road to it.
Of lane miles. And you, and if I remember correctly, then the PCI index that you just done, you do that every five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and I think we'll see a, a, a super increase in scores if we do this project over the next five.
So, are you going to present to us now? Or, well, I guess you've already said the bond has to take care of fair, but that's going to be part of the budget workshop?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we will, um, uh, be bringing back a list of projects, so that we can get some direction. Tracy will be working with our bond council. And essentially, what you will do as a part of the adoption of the bond, um, I mean, as in a part of the adoption of the budget, you will authorize the sale of the debt at a time, so that it is, um, factored into this tax rate calculation as a part of the budget process.
The only other thing I want to clarify, just because people will take a sound bite, the Burleson Crossing incentive, that is paying them back a portion of sales tax that they have paid in. We are not taking money from citizens... We are not taking money from citizens and sh- shipping it off to Burleson. So it, they aren't eligible for it until they pay it in and I, and they're on a track to pay off early to the whole deal, or are they right on time with the 2021?
It was either a total dollar amount or so many years.
Right.
They'll actually be ahead of the years.
That was my point, so.
It's a total dollar amount, so once they reach that dollar amount, they're done paying.
I miss, the first two years are funded out before Burleson's paid off.
It's, it, it is a five-year program, if you will go back. What we will do is we will issue tax notes. So to give you just a, a, a short, um, uh, primer on public debt financing. Traditionally, cities issue certificate of obligations or general obligation debt. General obligation requires voter, uh, approval, COs is something you can issue. Typically, COs and GOs are issued for 10, 15 and 20-year time periods. There is a, um, uh, form of public debt called a short-term tax note and it is a, uh, debt sale that lasts between two and seven years with, that's pledged with the same good faith tax credit of the public as a CO or GO. The reason you do a shorter time period is it, it mirrors the useful life of whatever it is you're trying to invest in. So we're doing street maintenance that's not necessarily gonna have a lifespan of 10, 15 or 20 years. So what we'll do is a five-year tax note every year to generate this $553,000. So by the time we get out to 2021 and that, um, tax incentive gets paid off, we'll start putting away 200 to 250,000 dollars in the general, uh, fund for street maintenance. And my commitment to you to be open and transparent is we will calculate that in the context of, um, cents on the tax rate. And so for purposes of internal transparency, you'll have three components. Your current tax rate has two components. One is called interest and sinking, INS, and that pays for the debt. The second is O and M, operation and maintenance, that pays for everything in the general fund. Tracy is gonna create a third fund and whatever we designate as a part of our tax rate for street maintenance will be swept immediately into street maintenance. So he's not gonna decide this year, he's gonna buy equipment or pay for drainage or whatever else, no sir. He's got a street maintenance fund that's designated to do street maintenance, so when we make the commitment to our citizens that their streets are appropriately funded and taken care of, we can deliver on that. And then every year that we have a mile of street, then we're gonna have to take what it costs to have a mile of crack seal and a mile of, of seal coat and add that to it so that we always have enough money to maintain the streets, so that this conversation doesn't happen again.
I like that. That was smart. I like that.
So do the short-term, uh, does that raise our, uh, property tax rate?
No, sir. Um, you have a capacity and it is, um, it's managed out of that 4.2, um, million that's available. And so once that five-year tax note's paid off, then it's now available to resell for long-term, short-term, depending on whatever it is you need. And so the, the goal is, is to take your available debt and essentially use it for the important things and, um, fund it, uh, over its useful life. So once it's paid off, it goes back into that pot and at that point in time, there'll be something else you'll want to fund and it could be some kind of drainage improvement, because by the time we get to that point, we'll probably have a plan, know how much it costs and the capacity to, to do that with.
So is it kind of like using a credit rating as opposed to collecting cash, like raising taxes and collecting cash, we're using our credit rating from the, the company of the business to fund it?
Great, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, got anything to say? All right. So Council, uh, Councilor Peterson?
Yes, I'm just gonna say, uh, I'm not an engineer, but I am a facility manager and I definitely believe in maintenance and perimeter maintenance, so it's a good plan.
Absolutely. I agree completely. So Council, you're clear on, you, we'll see this back with, with final numbers, but Staff, you've gotten what you need from us, that we're in agreement with this. And the, um, are all of these last four conditions red streets?
Yes, yeah, these are the, these are the ones that are in shape, that they're either gonna deteriorate so fast, they're gonna be failed soon, or they're already failed.
Okay.
These are your bond issued.
And, and part of the challenge here is not all of these streets are heavily populated. So then, but the question becomes, um, what do you put back in order to make it smart to maintain? And that's a journey we'll take once we figure out the traffic count and all of those things. But those are factors that when we come back and begin to make some long-term decisions, um, and this will probably occur, uh, next fiscal year, just because it's, it's a lot of effort on the part of Staff to do the traffic counts and camera the lines with everything else we've got. Um, there are some failed streets that are, um, uh, have a high traffic count and have some importance in our transportation plan that we will bring to you next month, that I think that there will be consensus as to why we do them now and all of that. So we will be able to make some improvements on some failed streets while we work out a process to deal with them collectively as a whole.
There, there's gonna be a point that we're gonna start asking you, which street are we talking about?
Yes.
So that we can get mentally, you know, the traffic count's one thing, how many, how many people, it may not have a huge traffic count, but if it's a big neighborhood street and there's a lot of residents on it, that's different than a street that's cut through that has no, you know, so a- as we go down into it, we're gonna be expecting more details.
To give you an example, just from the, we've done all of Riverside Grove and, and Hunter's Crossing and the, the residential collector streets are about 200 trips a day, um, but the, the thoroughfares that are going through, or I guess that is the collector that's coming in, is actually getting around 15 to 2,000. So those are high, small ones are, not gonna be a lot of work. So these small neighborhood streets that are failed, like you were talking about, or that area in the north end of town, that may be something that looks a little bit different, like a 20-foot wide street and things like that.
When engineering make, makes common sense, we'll, we'll be able to make some real good decisions.
Sure.
Okay, is that, are we done on that item? All right. Is, Council, is there anything else you're wanting to visit about? Councilmember Jones, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, I think we should be done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so if there's nothing else to talk about, it is 9:08 and we are adjourned.